Two minutes to air, one minute to livestream. One minute to air, thirty seconds to livestream.
Recording in progress.
Happy Monday, everybody. Happy Monday. I would like to call the Durham City Council meeting to order for this Monday, June 5th, 2023, here in our city council chambers at City Hall Plaza. We have a room full, and we also have a lot of folk outside. This is what democracy looks like, and so we welcome everybody in this space tonight, and we welcome those who are joining us on the internet as well. In order to prepare our hearts and minds to the business that is before us tonight, let us have a moment of silent meditation. Thank you all so much. I'll now turn our attention to Councilwoman Freeman, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. It's our practice to stand and salute the flag if you'll join us.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the religion of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. We will now have our roll call.
Mayor O'Neill.
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Halsey Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We have five ceremonial items tonight, and we will take them in the order that they appear on the agenda. The first one is the Juneteenth Weekend Proclamation, which will be read by Councilwoman Williams. The second will be the Neighbor Works Week Proclamation, which will be read by Councilwoman Freeman. The LGBTQ Pride Month Proclamation will be read by Councilwoman Johnson. I will read the Gun Violence Awareness Month Proclamation, and Councilwoman Halsey Hyman will give us our Harmony Month Proclamation, in that order without me interrupting further.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Aya Shabu, creator of Cool and Village of Wisdom. And how that? There you go, friend. Come on over here. All right, so you're representing everyone tonight, all right? It's good to see you. So our proclamation: Whereas Durham is a city that takes pride in its rich history and is willing to acknowledge and celebrate the contributions and achievements of its residents; and whereas the city of Durham owes much to the indigenous and African ancestors whose bones, blood, sweat, and tears were fertilizer to tobacco fields and mortar to factory bricks; the city of Durham agrees to create opportunities to tell those stories as well. And whereas the proclamation of emancipation, signed by President Abraham Lincoln in 1863, was, as Durham's own Saint Paulie Murray said, "A historical and documentary recognition of an accomplished fact; for the human spirit cannot be suppressed, nor can it be truly liberated by the laws of man, but by its own belief in the right to freedom." And whereas the presenting institutions of Spectacular Magazine, Bragtown Community Association, True Heart Consulting, Be Connected Durham &amp; Beyond, and Village of Wisdom Incorporated are unified by their pride and organized Juneteenth events in a wonderful celebration of human resistance and resilience. Now therefore, I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim June 16th through 19th, 2023, as Juneteenth Weekend. Let's make it official by me finishing this up. In Durham, and hereby urge all residents to take note of this observance, witness my hand and corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this fifth day of June 2023. Applause.
Thank you, City Council and Mayor. Thank you for acknowledging Juneteenth Weekend in the second year in a row. I recognize the importance of including our elected officials as allies in the enormous fight for liberation. This year, Juneteenth Weekend is from Friday, June 16th, through Monday, June 19th. For myself and my collaborators of the Durham Juneteenth Collective, Juneteenth Weekend is an expression of Black unity and Black sovereignty in Durham, and both are necessary for Black liberation. In 2021, three sisters came together out of a desire to protect, preserve, and amplify two historic African-American neighborhoods, Bragtown and Hayti. Rather than compete for significance, resources, or audiences, we leaned into Durham's legacy of mutual aid and formed the Durham Juneteenth Collective. It is under our motto, unified by our pride, that we support one another. This year, the collaborations across Durham's Juneteenth Collective include a new celebration, the West End Juneteenth, on Monday, June 19th, as well as a limited edition Juneteenth candle with artwork by Artavist Claire Alexander and scented by Bright Black. There is also a full slate of Durham Juneteenth Collective celebrations from Friday to Monday across three neighborhoods with leadership from eight organizations. That's collaboration. These successes are examples of our mission to leverage the collective talent and resources of Durham's historically Black neighborhoods to deliver high-quality, neighborhood-centered Juneteenth celebrations to the residents of Durham. I am now honored to present to you the Durham Juneteenth Leadership, Ms. Constance Sartor Walker of the West End Lion Park Legacy Project. Please stand. Donna. All right, y'all, hold y'all applause, because there's a few of us. Thank you. Chair, Ms. Vanessa Mason of Bragtown Community Association, and Donna Frederick, co-chair, Bragtown resident and owner of True Heart Consulting LLC, Taylor Mary Weber Fields, Angel Dozier of Be Connected Durham &amp; Beyond, Gail Belvet of Art Chose Me, Garme Keta of Free Things in Life, and me, Aya Shabu of Village of Wisdom. We are also we are also so grateful for our programming collaborators, Bump the Triangle, The Magic of African Rhythm, and comedian and emcee, De Wish. But the Durham Juneteenth Collective does not stand alone. Unlike Ms. Phyllis Coley, when she first celebrated North Carolina's first Juneteenth, the DJC stands on Ms. Coley's legacy, the annual North Carolina Juneteenth Celebration, celebrating its 18th year. With our arms filled with pride, they remain outstretched wide because we know that liberation takes all of us. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Deidre Anna Freeman, and I'll be presenting the Neighbor Works Proclamation, Neighbor Works Week Proclamation to Ms. Sherri Taylor, Executive Director of Durham Community Land Trustees. Whereas Neighbor Works Week celebrates the way Neighbor Works and Neighbor Works Network organizations and residents work together to enhance lives; and whereas Neighbor Works Week showcases the work of local organizations empowering people to act so they can achieve their goals for safer, more secure housing and healthier, thriving communities; and whereas Neighbor Works Week was initiated in 1983 by a United States Congressional Resolution co-sponsored by more than 240 members of Congress; and whereas Neighbor Works Week is an annual initiative held each year, the first through the second Saturday in June; and whereas Neighbor Works Week celebrates neighborhood success, empowerment, pride, and unity among nearly 250 organizations in all 50 states, Washington DC and Puerto Rico; and whereas Durham Community Land Trustees have worked in the city of Durham for 36 years and the Triangle region for almost 50 years, and both are Neighbor Works Network's members. Now therefore, I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim June 3rd to the 10th, 2023, as Neighbor Works Week. In Durham, and hereby urge all residents to participate in neighborhood-driven planning and community development, such as the work performed by DCLT and DHIC, our local Neighbor Works Network members. Witness my hand and corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this the fifth day of June 2023. And I did want to just note that the work of Neighbor Works is more than just building housing. It's actually building people to actually do it for themselves. And so they actually organize around the people in the community being the community developer. And so when I talk about that concept, it's not foreign. It's actually used very widely across the country, and grateful to have a partner here in Durham.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman, the mayor, and the entire city council. I would also invite representatives from DHIC. We have with us their CEO, Yolanda Winstead, and Tenu Divar to come up with me. As Councilmember Freeman said, Neighbor Works Week and supporting that is supporting our collective impact. It's supporting organizations all over the country, including DCLT and DHIC, in our community work, our collective impact. My name is Sherri Taylor. I'm the Executive Director of DCLT. We've been in Durham since 1987, providing affordable rentals and homeownership opportunities. We believe in permanent affordability. Not 20 years, not 30 years, not 40 years, forever. I know, it's a powerful concept, but it's what our community needs because low- and moderate-income families are facing displacement. Displacement is real. But together, we can combat that. DCLT operates 198 units of rental housing across eight neighborhoods. We support 50 land trust homeowners with permanently affordable homeownership. That means every time a home is resold, it's resold affordably. Some of our homes have been resold three and four times. But we can't rest. We can't stop there and just celebrate what we've done. We've got to push forward. And so, together, we can do that. We are at a critical time in our city's history. What we stand for, who we stand for, matters. I'm standing for a Durham that can house everyone. Everyone. I invite you to consider taking this stand for yourself. All of us are needed to do this. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. A little short here. I'm excited to read our proclamation this year for LGBTQ Pride Month. Happy Pride. Whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ communities of Durham are an integral part of the vibrant culture and fabric of our city; and whereas LGBTQ Pride Month is celebrated nationally each year in June and commemorates the riots that took place at the Stonewall Inn, Manhattan, the morning of June 28, 1969, often viewed as the birth of the modern LGBTQ rights movement; and whereas several major United States Supreme Court decisions impacting LGBTQ rights in a positive way have been announced in the month of June, including Lawrence v. Texas, US v. Windsor, Obergefell v. Hodges, and Pavan v. Smith; and whereas the city of Durham has a proud history of advancing the rights of LGBTQ North Carolinians, including being the location of North Carolina's first Pride March in June of 1981, passing a resolution supporting LGBTQ equality in June of 1986, hosting an annual Pride Parade and celebration in September of each year since 1986, and vehemently opposing Amendment 1 in 2012 and the passage of HB 2 in 2016; and whereas while we celebrate progress made for LGBTQ rights, we also reflect on challenges that remain, including efforts around the country, including in the North Carolina General Assembly to ban transition care for minors, require teachers to out LGBTQ students to parents, and prevent transgendered children from playing school sports. And whereas unfortunately, there is still much physical and psychological violence inflicted on LGBTQ people, both at home and abroad; and there is increasing violence toward transgender women of color, LGBTQ people continue to face discrimination in employment and public accommodations; and there continues to be bullying and harassment of LGBTQ youth who make up a disproportionate number of homeless youth in the United States. And whereas Durham is committed to standing with and supporting the LGBTQ community and working to ensure that all of its residents, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are treated with respect and dignity. Now therefore, I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as LGBTQ Pride Month in Durham, and hereby urge all residents to take note of this observance. Thanks, y'all. And we have Natalie Watson, Executive Director of the LGBTQ Center of Durham, here to say a few words. Welcome.
Hey, y'all. How's it going tonight? This is the second year I've had the opportunity to accept the proclamation for LGBTQ Pride Month, and it makes me, my heart swell, you know? Come second year in a row. Lord have mercy, y'all. Two times now, my heart has swelled. And listening to the other proclamations that have been made, they impact the work that we do. It's a part of why we exist. The LGBTQ Center of Durham is constantly addressing issues when it comes to violence towards trans women of color, specifically Black trans women, providing stability and housing for folks. The Neighbor Works Week, we work with folks who are displaced because they're LGBTQ and they don't have housing. So thank you, city council members, for acknowledging and understanding the complexities and everything that's happening in Durham, and individually recognizing our identities and how important those are, but also noticing that, like, intersectionality is a thing, right? I'm a Black, queer, trans person that also has been raised here in Durham, and so it means a lot to see all aspects of myself being celebrated. So I'm really excited for Juneteenth. Oh, y'all can't clap while I'm talking, sorry. Really excited for Juneteenth. While the LGBTQ Center of Durham will not be doing any particular programming this month, we'll be celebrating everybody else's programming, so feel free to see us around the city. But Pride will be September 23rd, held on Duke's East Campus, and then we'll have a concert again that night, so we're really excited. This is a little bit of joy in the mess that's been happening across the nation, impacting multiple sets of my identities; and the fact that the city of Durham continues to take a stand and says, "We support our LGBTQ residents. We acknowledge that the laws that are trying to be passed, it's not going to fly in our city." And I really appreciate that, so thanks, y'all.
Hello, everybody. Happy Tuesday again, Monday again. It is Monday, right? Hillside High School, are you in the house somewhere? All right, here we go. Dr. Logan, you in the house? He's outside. If you could bring him in for me. All the young people, all the young people. Have your young people stand there. You and Tab, come up here. Stand right in front of everybody so they can see y'all beautiful faces. This is the face of Hillside High School. Drama department. Standing here tonight with me is the principal, my nephew of, what I call my nephew over at Hillside High School, Dr. Logan, and also one of my great friends and brothers, Mr. Wendell Tab. And they are responsible for bringing these young people here for me to present this proclamation to you all. If you have not seen the play that they participated in, I'm going to ask our principal and our drama, I mean, he's just a Renaissance man in that field, so I'm going to ask them to kind of tell us a little bit about that and do whatever you need to do. We're going to take a few minutes to celebrate our young people. So here we go. Whereas gun violence continues to plague our communities with devastating effects on families and neighborhoods throughout the city; and whereas it is crucial that we come together as a city to raise awareness about the impact of gun violence and work to prevent it from occurring in the future; and whereas June is nationally recognized as Gun Violence Awareness Month with communities across the country coming together to promote greater awareness and understanding of this critical issue. And whereas by designating June as Gun Violence Awareness Month in this city, we can join with other cities and states in promoting education, advocacy, and support for those affected by gun violence. Now therefore, I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as Gun Violence Awareness Month in Durham, and urge all residents to participate in activities and events designed to raise awareness of this issue, support those affected by gun violence, and work towards ending this epidemic in our city and beyond. Be it further resolved that during Gun Violence Awareness Month, we recognize the efforts of organizations and individuals who are working tirelessly to prevent gun violence and support survivors; and we reaffirm our commitment to building safer communities for all of Durham residents. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham this the fifth day of June 2023. I invited these young people here tonight along with their actual caregivers during the day because they have been doing something that I have asked and encouraged every citizen in Durham to do, and that's volunteer in some way in your community. These young people have chosen to volunteer to help us to fight gun violence. And I get calls every day. We all do up on the dais. Emails, calls, people in the streets. What are you doing about gun violence? And what can you do to stop it? And I turn back to them and I say, "What are you doing about gun violence? And what are you doing to stop it? Because it's going to take all of us." And so these young people serve as an example of after they've had a hard, hard day at school and they're progressing along, they have been the recipient of seeing many things happen in their school, good and bad, but yet they take the time to volunteer to show us a better way. So thank you, Dr. Logan, Dr. Tab, for all y'all do, and y'all got the mic.
Great evening. And to Mayor O'Neill, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity and for giving us the opportunity to be a part of this proclamation here in the city of Durham. And the same holds true to all of the council members who are established, assembled here this evening. I take great pleasure and joy in being able to shepherd these young individuals, these young intelligent individuals, these young intelligent, passionate, dynamic individuals. As Mayor O'Neill indicated, they take time out of their busy schedules to not just participate in these theatrical events, but to bring awareness to this epidemic that is plaguing our city. And it hits home in so many ways for so many of our children in Durham. And to know that the children at Hillside High School are actually taking the reins and taking charge of their lives and the lives of their peers in such a way by bringing them information about what they can do to stop gun violence here in our city. And again, as the principal of Hillside High School, I'm just delighted to be able to serve in that capacity, in this capacity. And I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our, we call him our professor emeritus because he's a retired teacher here in Durham Public Schools after 35 years, and he's still giving back and still giving his time to work with our sons and daughters here in Durham, specifically at Hillside High School, Mr. Wendell Tab, who will tell you a little bit about the play, The State of Urgency.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Logan, to Mayor O'Neill and to the council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here tonight. This is a passion that many of us have, but that passion is real when it comes to gun violence or social issues in our community. You can have a passion about something, but when it's affecting you each and every day and the lives of these young people, it carries on a different meaning. And so these young people took the calls of me having a play that I've been working on for at least the last probably seven or eight years because so many different issues was going on in our communities. But they took that charge and staged that play for me, and I want them to know that they are the ones who are making the difference. And so State of Urgency is a ripening, it's a brutal play on social issues in America, and we want these young people to continue to use their voices to make a difference in our society. So if I would pause and let the theater director that's there now come, Ms. Tiffany Aggerton, so I can introduce her to all of you. Tiffany Aggerton.
Greetings to you all, and thank you so much for having us here today. Giving honor to my principal, Dr. William T. Logan, and our former drama director, Mr. Wendell Tab. I'm Tiffany Aggerton, and I am in awe of what these students can do when they come together to have their voices heard. Like many of us, State of Urgency hits home. It is my hope that we continue to take this message to young people across the city of Durham and our state that we may be able to bring about change just by sounding the alarm and saying that this has to stop. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Good evening. Good evening to my, can everybody hear me? Good evening. Good evening to the mayor. Good evening to my colleagues. I don't know about you, but I am just in awe to just a few, I'm just in awe. Can I just get a clap for Durham? Can I just get a clap for Durham? I don't know about you, but I'm happy to be a resident of Durham. So I'm going to be reading the Harmony Month proclamation. Whereas our daily lives are filled with news regarding crime, violence, inequality, and disaster, and causing discard and imbalance. And whereas by recognizing the need for cooperation, goodwill, and peace, all members of our community will be made aware of the importance. And whereas the purpose of the Harmony Month is to remember that similar to us creating music with various instruments, our differences grant us the opportunity to come together to create harmony. Whereas harmony extends past tolerance in prioritizing, understanding, actively listening to build synergy. And whereas by showing humility, we are striving for a sense of belonging and creating a community that is welcoming, inclusive, kind, and a safe place to live, work, and play. And whereas the city of Durham honors those who positively influence our community. Now therefore, I Elaine M. O'Neal, Mayor of the City of Durham of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as Harmony Month in Durham and hereby urge all residents to work in synergy, self-control, remain optimistic, while always spreading kindness and treating one another with respect and generosity so that we can live in harmony. Witnessed by the hand and the corporate seal of the city of Durham, this day, 5th of June 2023, Mayor M. O'Neal, the mayor. And let me just say, not only harmony, but let's live with love. A good spirit is free. Can I get, yes, let's clap. Love, a good, and working together because a good spirit is free. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are now moving to the announcements of my colleagues. And I'll turn first to my left to see if we have any announcements on my left-hand side. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What a weekend. I, the Bull City was electric this weekend. Got a chance to ride around and see a few events before heading out of town. Get a feedback from the door. But it was, just shout out to Juneteenth. I got a chance to stop by briefly. Unfortunately, had some grief to deal with with friends who have passed away. But just this weekend, there were so many events going on. I hope that you'll go back. I hope that you'll go back and just look at everything that was happening and just take that as an example of the energy that we want in our city on a daily. It was good for us culturally, spiritually, economically, and just great to be amongst one another. There was something for everyone. Just wanted to shout that out and hope that we can have many more.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Hosea.
So I'm still on a high from the weekend. The Bembe, just event was just, I mean, I will tell you this, that I got my dance on and I haven't danced in many, many years. But when they brought out the hip hop in the back of the 90s and the 80s and the 70s, I would like to let you know that I had to sit in a whole tub of Bengay water for the whole weekend after that. But it was just a blessing to be there, to just see just the community and just how everybody was interacting. The food was good, the energy was good. And that is really what we want to see in Durham. Again, a good spirit is free and let's keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. To my right, any announcements? Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to appreciate my colleagues and the city of Durham, of course. Just, it's humbling every June as we come around to the budget season ending and get ready to go to a break of sorts. I did want to thank the Juneteenth Collaborative for making sure that we have a whole weekend and it's not just one day and run into every which spot. And I do want to say Happy Pride as an ally to our LGBTQ community, IA+. I am mindful of what that feels like and just noting, like I've had the Saint Pauli message in my heart all my life, so. I also want to say to Dr. Logan and Professor Emeritus Tab, thank you. Having those students in this space this evening is calming and reinforcing in the work that's ahead. I do want to share that this evening, I am going to ask for a resolution to be added to our work session agenda. I've shared with my colleagues and just sharing publicly, honoring the life of Conan Morgan, who was lost in an accident at the age of 42. It's been heartbreaking. I'll leave it at that. I, on a lighter note, do want to extend a very happy, happy Caribbean Heritage Month. Just noting all the folks from the Caribbean who have blessed us with their soul. It's great to have. And yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Cabiera.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone. I just wanted to shout out Happy Pride, y'all, more than anything this month. I can say as a parent to a generation that honestly doesn't care what older folks think. To see their bravery around gender expression, gender identity, you know, as I'm in my mid-40s, we did not have that growing up. We grew up in a world with a lot of fear and a lot of intolerance. And let me just say, we're never going back. I don't care what rules or whatever you're going to push. We're not going back. And I know these kids aren't going back. So Happy Pride.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening to you, ma'am, and to my honorable colleagues, to everyone in the chamber. Let me extend my congratulations to these young people who were here before us in Hillside High. What an amazing night of proclamations. Happy Pride Month to all of our residents and citizens and to the family and friends and allies as well. I also want to say a Happy Hip Hop Appreciation Month. We issued a proclamation at an incredible Bembe celebration this past week. And so for all this month, you are ordered to get your hands up and keep them there all month long. Happy Hip Hop Appreciation Month. I also would urge all residents and neighbors, if you get a chance, make a chance. Take the opportunity to drive by the Durham County Courthouse. Today, we had an amazing ceremony where the Juneteenth flag was raised at the Durham County Courthouse and will fly until Monday, June 19th. Two anthems were sung today. The, our nation's anthem, National Anthem and Lift Every Voice and Sing. And two flags, there are three out there, but the Juneteenth flag is flying next to the American flag. I hope that it will encourage us all to continue the conversation and to lean into the tension that it requires for us to become truly a more perfect union. It was a wonderful day today. Finally, a wonderful day today. Finally, colleagues, I'm asking for an excused absence this week. I'll be traveling to Chicago to participate in a Guaranteed Income Conference. I'm going to take opportunity to brag a little bit on the successful pilot that we've run here in Durham and to learn also from colleagues and friends, absolutely, best practices from around the country. So I'm going to ask you, my honorable colleagues, for an excused absence for this Thursday's work session that I might attend that conference. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I yield back.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
I did forget one comment. Back to Hillside High School. I'm hoping we can do this city and county wide. I went to Hillside High School last week to be a judge for their civic engagement activity. This was an opportunity for the students at Hillside to come up with solutions for some of the most impactful community issues. And things that I saw was mental illness for youth, mental health for youth, gun violence, gun violence, gun violence, gun violence. Also some technology, technological solutions. You would be amazed at the innovation that these kids are coming up with. It's beyond probably what anyone in this room can even think of. So let's give them some light and let's give them some attention and take them very seriously. This is our future. And I'm going to post some of those, some of those billboards today they created. You'll be amazed. So I just wanted to shout out those. I said they're all winners, so I'm not going to name the competition winners. But check out the Civic Engagement Project at Hillside High School. It was amazing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think Councilwoman Freeman had something additional to say.
Yes, sorry, Madam Mayor. Because by the next time that we meet will be after Father's Day. I do want to send a very special shout out to all the folks in the community who serve as fathers to our children and just say Happy Father's Day, especially to my dear, dear husband and my father especially.
Oh, thank you. Clap for all the fathers now. All right, I have a number of announcements and we do have to, I think, vote on your excused absence. I don't think we did it. Is that correct? Diana, we didn't, we didn't vote. Okay, so we'll come back to that in just a second. I have been still having, going around to different city facilities for tours. And so last week I had the opportunity to visit with Waste Management and also with Public Works. I started about quarter of six on last week, one early one morning, early one morning, and went out to Camden Road. If you've ever been in, if you've been in Durham for a while, I encourage you to go out on Camden Road and you will see a lot of Durham facilities that are kind of hidden back there. And so I get in there and when I tell you those gentlemen and men, they roll out. At 5:30, they were already pulling up. By the time I got there, it was almost, most, all of them were in their trucks. And they roll out and I had the opportunity to get in a recycling truck and ride with Chris Benjamin, who has a very clean truck, by the way. A very neat, nice sound system in it too. I have to come in y'all there. So he's listening to Tom Joy on the morning show and we were going out and he's picking up. They pick up about 80,000, 80,000 bins a week. And on his shift, on his route, he has about 1,100 that he picks up. So they are out there and it is a dangerous job. There are actually two steering wheels in that truck. And they get on the left side and they're operating a joystick to pick up your bins. And then he's also driving. And people, like we all do, are going around him. And the children are waiting at the bus stop. So it was amazing to me how peaceful all of that was in the midst of all of this kind of chaos that he has no control over. So my hat's off to all of them. Mr., I'm trying to think of Mr. Wayne Fenton, who took me over to the main building. He's the supervisor out there. And it was just a very, it was a very peaceful morning. I was really pleased with seeing what they do and how well they do it. So just wanted to give them a shout out. And then that afternoon, went on Martin Luther King to probably what you all have all passed and that's Public Works. Well, Public Works is the first first responders. The police or the firemen, they can't move unless Public Works after a disaster, after bad weather, potholes. Public Works comes in and they clear the way. And once again, very quiet, very quiet facility where they are doing all kinds of work and they have all manner of equipment. They have one truck out there that has a couple of robots in it that actually, and a camera, of course. And they actually, on those robots, are able to put those car, little robotic cars down under the ground. And whenever something goes wrong, so they can get a clear picture of what needs to happen. And it's just one guy man in there. There was one young lady who actually fixes potholes without ever getting out the truck. Without ever getting out the truck, she is able to maneuver all of the equipment that's on her truck and fix potholes. So when I tell you that we have some great city workers who are moving in places that you don't even think about. And what they're doing is making sure that we can do the stuff that we do and we take for granted. So I have to give a shout out to Marvin Williams and Mr. Philip Power and all of those workers over in both of those places. Man, Durham, I'm so proud of you all and the work that you all do. I am extremely grateful as well for what you all are doing on a daily basis while we sleep a lot of times. So a shout out to everybody. Thank you. So we did have a lot of stuff going on. And I did receive notification today that Durham has received another grant. We are now about to receive up to $1.2 million for a project that will develop plan, support planning and project development activities to grade separate or close, closed three adjacent crossings in East Durham. Everybody know where that is in East Durham, what those railroads are. Y'all know that exchange station down on East Durham and on, at the corner of Ellis on one side and Angela, they're coming to work on it. I've been waiting all my life for that moment. I live on that side of town. Thank you, Lord. They're coming to work on it. So congratulations to Go Triangle Durham County Government and Durham City Government for that grant. Also, we did have a beautiful weekend. I did want to mention that Keep Durham Beautiful, one of my favorite organizations, was out on Lynnwood and Lincoln over the weekend. Also for gun violence events, they were, they were over there cleaning two, a couple of streets over there with a mother who lost her son on Saturday. And I was able to drop by and see some of them. We also had the Beaver Fest Pageant. I don't know if people went to that at Duke, at Duke Park over the weekend. And of course, we had the Bembe where it was just an all-star lineup out there. I spent about five hours out there and it was just a great time. So Durham has a lot of great things going on. We do have our issues, but the Bull City is still the greatest city in the United States of America as far as I'm concerned. All right. There you have it. I didn't even know that. We're the only city in the state that got the money. Yep, dad, that's what I'm trying to tell you. We had our issues now, but we're a good city, a good group. Okay, so now we're going to recognize our city manager for any priority items she may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and members of the Durham City Council. I have two priority items to bring to your attention this evening. Agenda item number 18, which is a construction contract with Eagle Solar and Light LLC for design and installation of photovoltaic electrical generation systems at Water Management Miss Lake Facility. This item has been referred back to the General Services Department. Agenda item number 25, contract with WM Recycle America LLC for recycling, processing, and marketing of recyclable materials. Section 2 of the contract, which is attachment number 2, was modified to incorporate an agreement about managing non-sellable recyclable materials. That is all I have for you this evening and thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I now turn to our city attorney to see if she has any priority items. Attorney Ray Bird.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neal, Mayor Protem Middleton, and members of the city council and members of the Durham community and Durham employees. It's good to be with you this evening. The city attorney has no priority items tonight. I can get that out.
Thank you. Thank you. To our city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of things. The first one is we need to vote on the excused absence for Mayor Protem.
And I'm ready to entertain that motion.
Moved. Second.
The move by Councilwoman Williams and seconded by Councilwoman Cabiera. All those in favor by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed have the same right, hearing none, that motion carries.
Thank you, Pauli.
And Madam Mayor, I have one other priority item. Well, it's not exactly a priority item, but I would like to request a point of personal privilege. Yes, okay, thank you. I'm really pleased to welcome and introduce to the city of Durham our new deputy clerk. Her name's Paola Roland. And Paola has worked in the city clerk's office as assistant clerk. And she's done such an outstanding job that she's been promoted to deputy clerk. And I'm really happy to have her here with us. And I wish her much. And I'm really happy to have her here with us and I wish her much success as deputy clerk.
Thank you. So glad to see you in your new position tonight and we know that you will do it quite well as you've done so far. I did forgot to, I forgot to mention one thing that Chris Benjamin asked me to mention to you all. When you put your recycling receptacles and your trash can out, they need to be, they like for them to be three feet apart. Makes sense, right? Most of us do what? Jam them together? Don't do it. Keep them apart, please. He says at least three feet because what? The arms have to go out and come back in. So please, spread the word when you see your neighbors. Put your carts three feet apart for us, okay? So I told him I would say that. All right, so now we will, we will now go through our agenda, our consent agenda first. The next order of business is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items that the council has previously considered in a work session. All items on a consent agenda may be approved by a single vote of the council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda by a council member or a member of the public and those items will be considered separately at the end of the meeting. I will go through the entire agenda, agenda beginning with the consent agenda item number one, the Citizens Advisory Committee appointments. Two, Workforce Development Board appointment. Item three, the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission appointments. Item four, Durham City County Environmental Affairs Board appointment. Number five, Human Relations Commission appointment. Number six, Durham Sports Commission appointment. Item seven, the Durham Cultural Advisory Board appointment. Number eight, April 2023 bid report. Item nine, disciplinary actions process performance audit, April 2023. Item 10, the amendment to the FY 2022-23 budget. Eleven, the charter amendment renaming Triangle J Council of Governments to Central Pines Regional Council. Item 12, Ameri National Community Services LLC doing businesses, Ameri Nat for affordable housing loan portfolio servicing contract. Number 13, the second amendment to the contract with Housing for New Hope to serve as the Unchallenged Coordinating Agency. Item 14, annual insurance plan FY 24. Number 15, construction contract with DW Ward Construction Company, Inc. for the Morgan Riggs B Parking Garage Suite 103 tenant outfit. Sixteen, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Volkswagen Settlement Fast Charge or Replacement Grant Project Ordinance and Financial Assistance Agreement. Seventeen, fellowship placement agreement between the City of Durham Infuse, F U S E Corps for Designing Equitable Strategies for Vehicle Electrification. Item 18, construction contract with Eagle Solar Light LLC for design and installation of photovoltaic electrical generation systems at Water Management Miss Lake Facility. That's pool, that's what it was, pool. That's been referred back, I'm sorry. Thank you, you did say that. Thank you. Item 19, the change order number one to the construction contract with Barr Construction Company, Inc. for the athletic court renovations, Piney Wood Park Pickleball Project. Item 20, is a request for qualifications for redevelopment of 505 West Chapel Hill Street. 21, contract agreement with M Cube and Company Global LLC to provide economic development consulting services to create a business registry and legacy program. Item 22, item 22 is the 2023 first quarter crime report and that presentation was made at the May 18, 2023 city council work session. Item 23. Okay, and there is a person online, Mr. Cox, who is asking to speak for that item, sir, that will probably need to be done on Thursday during public comment as we've already had that presentation, sir. If you're online, if you would note to come back Thursday if you can at 1 o'clock where you will be allowed to speak during citizens' manners. And his name is Mr. Drew Cox, if he's on the line. Item 23 is the Duke Blanket Stone Water Control Measure Easement Agreement. Item 24, construction contract with Prism Contractors, Inc. for trenchless pipe repairs, SD-2023-03 and Stone Water Capital Improvement Project Ordinance Amendment. Item 25 is the contract with WM Recycle America LLC for recycling, processing and marketing of recyclable materials. 26, First Amendment to the Contract with Lix Air Electronics Sales Corporation for Completion of Last Mile Fiber Construction. 27 is the First Amendment to the Contract with GNS Communications and Technical Services, Inc. for Completion of Last Mile Fiber Construction. Item 28 is the Comprehensive Participation Agreement for the Implementation of the Durham County Transit Plan. 29 is the Memorandum of Agreement for the Western Intake Partnership Amendment Number Two. Item 30 is the Change Order Number Two with TA Loving Company for Construction of the South Durham Water Reclamation Facility Process Improvements Phase Two Project. Item 31 is the Award of Professional Engineering Services Contract with Brown and Caldwell, Inc. for the Farsia Park Sewer Improvements Project. 32, Change Order Number Two, Brady Integrated Security, Inc. for the Site and Building Security System at the Department of Water Management Facilities Conflicts Phase Two. Item 36, the public hearing for the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 budget and fiscal year 2024-2029 capital improvement plan, CIP. Item 37 is the Consolidated Annexation 418 Clayton Road. Item 38 is the Consolidated Annexation L Parcel. Item 39, the Consolidated Zoning Map Change Streets at South Point Mall Two. Item 40 is the Public Hearing and Economic Development Incentive Agreement with Eagle Landing Partners LLC. That will conclude the reading of the entire agenda.
He's not on.
Oh, he's not on.
He's not on the team.
But there is a gentleman. I don't want to hear him.
We're just checking to see if someone is online. Do we?
So this was 505 West Chapel.
Drew Cox, do you see him online at all, Ms. Diana? Yes, he's not online.
He's here.
He's here? Mr., oh, you're here, Mr. Cox? I'm sorry. All right, okay, and you, okay, Mr. Cox, we will pull the item for you, but pulled items are last. So just know you're in for a stay tonight if, just so you know. And I believe that there is another person that would like item 20.
I think that is him.
Online?
I think that's the same person.
All righty. Now, and also you all, these are the number cards we have for speakers tonight. So we're going to be here for a while, but I'm going to ask if you sign up to speak. If you would, bring your speech time down. We normally say three minutes, but if you could do it in two so that we can make sure that the bulk of people stay with us the entire time and get their time, okay? So just keep that in mind. I am going to reduce it down to two just so we can be accommodating and I'm not going to cut you off or anything, but if you could just try to work with us so that we can make sure we can hear from everybody. Yes.
Madam Mayor, you need to vote on the consent agenda.
I haven't forgotten. Just trying to get there. All right, now I'm ready to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Come on.
Second. With the exception of item 18.
And 20.
All right. We have moved that? What was the person that moved it?
I think it was Councilmember Williams and I seconded.
All right, thank you. All those in favor would just sign by just saying aye. Aye. All those opposed have the same right, hearing none. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is approved unanimously and items 22 and what was the other four items?
18.
And 18.
18 was referred back.
Refer it back. Thank you so much. Now we are on to our, our public hearings. And I believe the first one up is, we have the bulk of our speakers tonight and that is going to be item 36. So this is our public hearing for the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget and fiscal year 2024 through 2029 capital improvement plan. All righty, and I have, we're going to call everybody up, maybe five people at a time to this point. So our first five people, after we hear from staff first, I just to tell folk how they're coming, Ms. Stella Adams, Mr. John Talmage, Julia Springer, Mayor Rose Fantana and Sumal. I'm not sure if I can read their last name. So you'll be coming in that order, but first we will hear from staff. Just trying to get people, a lot of people outside, just trying to get people an opportunity to make sure they're in place. But we will hear from staff first.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. Christina Riordan, interim budget and management services director. Tonight, this agenda item is to, as you have said, to conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget and fiscal year 2024 through 2029 capital improvement plan. All required public hearing commitments have been fulfilled.
You have heard the report from our staff. I will now declare this public hearing to be open and will first entertain any questions and comments that we have with council. None? All right. We will move now to those persons. Ms. Stella Adams, Mr. Don Talmage.
Good evening, everyone.
Mayor Rose Fantana, thank you.
Y'all need to give me two because you know I'm going to take three. Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, Madam, Mr. Protem, city council members. I'm speaking this evening to advocate for a number of needs faced by our community. I ask first that the council view the proposed budget through an equity lens and ensure that we are not just meeting the needs of new residents, but we are also meeting the needs of those of us who have called Durham home for decades. Those of us who grew up here, raised a family here and hope to retire here. I hope that the council will continue to prioritize affordable housing programs. And I'm going to deviate from my, for just one moment. Do you know that according to HUD, a single-person household in Durham making $55,500, $53,500 is considered low income? Is there anyone in this chamber that thinks that a person that makes $55,000 is low income? Or that a person making $40,140 is very low income, a single person? So when we talk about affordable housing, we are talking about meeting the needs of the, we need to talk about facts. I'm running out of time. I also want to talk about transit, transit, transit. Get those sidewalks, bus stops, shelters, bikeways. And I want to again reiterate affordable housing, fight for, fund eviction services, fund our parks and recreation services, fund our community.
Never noticed this note before. Don't adjust the microphone. It does not lift. You break it, you buy it. Good evening, I'm John Talmage, resident of Durham at 910 Verge Street and executive director of Bike Durham. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the, about the budget. I want to start by taking a moment to acknowledge the death of Sean McDaniel on May 22nd, 40-year-old man who was crossing Fayetteville Street near East Cornwallis when he was hit by a Once every, on average, about every 16 days, someone who's walking or riding their bike is killed or seriously injured in a traffic crash in Durham. We don't think that that's acceptable and we appreciate that this council, through the budget, you have an opportunity to support the manager's proposal in moving toward Vision Zero with a future of transportation with zero deaths and serious injuries. We called for funding of a Vision Zero Coordinator, that's in the budget. We called for funding of complete networks of sidewalks and bicycle facilities, safe crossings and traffic calming in neighborhoods. And there's a good start for that in this capital improvement program proposal. We thank the manager for including these and we urge the council to adopt the budget includes these investments and to continue making these investments year after year until we've achieved Vision Zero. We also support the extension of zero fares on Go Durham bus service and Go Durham Access Paratransit. And finally, we support the expansion of the HART program. Thank you for such a great budget.
Can I start? Great. Hi, I'm Julia Springer. Good evening, everyone. I'm here with Durham For All tonight and I'm here in strong support of the expansion of the HART program and all the folks who showed out for it, but I'm going to use my two minutes to talk about the budget item for regular community engagement funding. For the last three years, I've been organizing with Durham For All and talking to our people about the current political climate, elections and what they need and want from our community. As we all know, Durham has changed a lot and is struggling deeply with affordable housing and gentrification. In so many of these conversations with long-term Durham residents, people describe a sense of their home slipping away from them, both literally and figuratively. It's hard to feel a sense of belonging in this city, including in how it's governed. One woman said she'd all but given up on this place. We also talked about pride in Durham. We talked about the budget, our city government, about being treated with dignity by our leaders and about how different it would feel to be meaningfully involved in this process. We talked about preemption and how to be in solidarity with our local government to tackle bigger issues at the state and federal levels. This brings, councilmembers Caballero and Johnson have been talking at Durham For All events to better explain our budget to folks. They showed up as real people to teach about a complex process, explain bureaucratic terms and long game visions for our community. The people of Durham want and deserve more chances like this, to be heard in their questions, share their experiences, go back and forth with our city leaders and collaborate to make this the Durham we all want, full of resource and dignity. I strongly support the city council's inclusion of regular community engagement funding in the budget this year and look forward to more opportunities to create access and belonging for everyone in Durham.
Hello, my name is Mary Fontana. I live at 809 Cook Road in Durham. Thank you, Mayor O'Neal and city council for allowing me to speak today. I am very thankful that manager Paige included the Vision Zero Coordinator in the city's budget. As an environmental engineer, I am a proud supporter of alternative modes of transportation, including bicycling, walking and using public transit. Investing in a Vision Zero Coordinator is investing in better, safer infrastructure with benefit. with benefit, which benefits Durham environmentally and economically. I primarily bicycle to get around this city, and the city's culture around safe bicycling infrastructure and prioritization is the main reason I live here. However, there's lots of room for improvement. On my easy four-mile ride here this evening, I experienced two near misses along the ride, one of which was just down the street on the protected bike lanes with the green paint, and I was wearing my high-vis vest. Thankfully, the driver turning right at the intersection I was crossing saw me in time to stop, but even the best bike lanes can't replace separated bike path infrastructure, traffic calming, or a shift-to-people-first mindsets in drivers. A city cannot be a city without its people, and we cannot keep tolerating the loss of 22 lives per year due to unsafe bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. So I encourage the city council to vote for a budget that invests in its people and keeps the city safe for everyone. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Samad Rungunwala. I live at 104 Brewer Lane, which is actually in Carboro. I'm an intern at Bike Durham, and I've had the privilege of spending the last three weeks looking over this budget proposal. At Bike Durham, we're happy that the city is responding to our advocacy efforts over the last spring. We've asked for the hiring of a Vision Zero Coordinator to develop the Vision Zero Action Plan. For those who don't know, Vision Zero calls for a shift to a safe systems approach to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe, healthy, and equitable mobility for all. It acknowledges that humans inevitably make mistakes and calls for streets and roads to be designed to accommodate these mistakes. This means designing for slower speeds and protected spaces for all street users. As part of this agenda for Durham, we also ask for funding for sidewalk repairs, protected bike lanes, and other bike infrastructure and traffic calming measures. We're happy that, we're happy to say that all of this and more is present in the budget proposal, and as a result, Bike Durham is proud to ask that the council implement this budget proposal in the Vision Zero Durham Agenda. We also recognize that this is one step in a very long journey toward Vision Zero. We'll need more investment, more energy, and more support in the coming years to get to zero deaths due to traffic violence, zero carbon emissions, and zero disparity of access in Durham. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And Mr. Drew Cox, Mr. Cox, I think we had the, you on the wrong item, so you will not be last. You may come now, sir.
All right. Hello, I'm Drew Cox. I serve over 60 of our members that are officers of the Durham Police Department as president of the Tobacco Road Chapter of the North Carolina Police Benevolent Association. We represent over 16,000 members statewide, and I'm here to speak on matters of public concern. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of this council. This city is known as the city of medicine, but your police department is suffering from trauma, and it is bleeding its most loyal, experienced, and talented officers week after week. On February 1st of this year, I spoke to Councilman Leonardo Williams to arrange a time that my organization can meet and give a presentation to this body on the looming staffing and pay crisis that has been ongoing in the Durham Police Department for several years. I was given an assurance he would bring the prospect up in open form for consideration, but it has been four months now, and I've seen no such measure given in this chamber. The Durham Police Department's starting recruit pays $42,593, and starting officer pays at $46,998, and those same new recruits enjoy up to $13,000 in signing bonuses in their first year, while officers that have gotten you through the COVID pandemic had their step pay frozen for the last three years. These pay rates remain the same, while in Greensboro, Rocky Mount, Chapel Hill, Hillsborough, and most other agencies immediately surrounding Durham have brought their starting pay to $60,000 or more. The Durham Police Department has at least a 70% staffing rate on paper, and the reality in day-to-day patrol staffing is mostly under 60%. We all know it, the people that are perpetuating gun violence know it, and the citizens of this city continue to suffer for it. Meanwhile, you vote for more and more annexations, which will further stretch the police department to the brink. Your proposed budget of a 2% increase in pay, a reinstatement of step pay, and a one-time bonus of $300 makes it so you can say you're doing something good for the department, but is more like putting a SpongeBob Band-Aid over a bullet wound. In fact, that $300 after tax might pay back a few months of the vaccine surcharge you took from your officers' paychecks. $65,000 starting pay now to stop the bleeding on this crisis.
Mr. Cox.
Or it will end in a catastrophe, and I hope that you will partner with our organization and the Fraternal Order of Police to help end this pay crisis with bold and decisive action.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. I have, you have run out of time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We are hearing you, sir. I am calling five more names in the order that they have been presented to me. Sumi Adada would be next, Shanice Hamilton, Manju Rajendran, Mr. Cedric Craig, and Mr. Jonathan Leiss, L-E-I-S-S, in those orders.
I can begin? Yes?
Ma'am.
Okay. Hello, good evening, council members. My name is Shumi. I'm a member of Durham For All, and I'm here tonight to support the $160 million budget for affordable housing. I was born and raised in Durham. I'm a middle-class South Asian person, and I earn about $72,000 a year. Thankfully, I don't struggle to pay my rent, but given the high cost of living in Durham, it doesn't leave a lot of room for me to save for a down payment. Without generational wealth or winning the lottery, I still cannot afford a down payment to buy a house in Durham without being a part of the gentrification of a historically black neighborhood such as East Durham. I'm highly privileged, and yet even I can't see a future where I'm able to live long-term in the city that made me who I am. If my housing future in Durham is uncertain, that says a lot about what the state of housing is for low-income and working-class folks in our city. I think of the people of Durham who shaped me, like my middle-school counselor who supported me through an intense season of depression when my immigrant parents struggled to understand my experience, or my social studies teacher who taught me the real history of Columbus and native genocide, which planted the seed in me to become the community organizer I am today. These are the folks behind the greatness of our city, and they're the same folks who are being pushed out from even renting, let alone buying a home here. I want to affirm your decision to invest abundantly and immediately in increasing affordable housing. I urge you to engage these folks about what housing security would look like for them so that change and rapid growth doesn't mean the displacement of the very people behind our greatness. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Hamilton, Shanice Hamilton, Manju, M-A-N-J-U-R-A-J-E-N-D-R-A-N, will be next, followed by Mr. Cedric Craig, followed by Mr. Jonathan Leiss, L-E-I-S-S. Thank you.
Hello, I'm here to speak on behalf of Shanice. My name is Nandi Smith. I've been in Durham since 2009, since I attended high school here at Southern and Hillside High School, and so many times, I've seen my classmates navigating mental health crises and being met with cruelty, sometimes pepper spray, instead of some of the compassion and the curiosity of what's going on in their life that's at the root. And so I'm here today to ask that you pour into the heart of our city and expand the HEART program, as so many other folks have already spoken to, citywide for 24 hours, seven days a week. So many of the young people I know have experienced themselves or have loved ones that have had violent experiences with police, and we see it a lot on the news, folks experiencing violence, and we know in our communities and across the globe where our neighbors are experiencing mental health crisis, a lot of the time, they're met with chokeholds, tasers, guns, and not the dignity that I know we all want to experience when we're navigating crisis and emergency situations. We need options for safety to expand instead of responding with limited, one-size-fits-all approaches, and our people need other options that are unarmed, compassionate, and skilled in responding and care. And so I'm here to urge you to prioritize ensuring all of our neighbors have access to care. Yeah, because we know our crisis can't be scheduled in the whole 24 hours a day. And so the pilot that we all so deeply love of the HEART program has been going on for about a year now, and I know it's had flying colors in their work, many of us have been witnesses to it, responding to over 6,000 calls and feeling safe in 99% of those interactions with our neighbors. And over the past three months, myself and others in the Have a HEART Coalition, made up of over 50 community organizations, local businesses, and houses of faith, as well as the neighbors of this city, over 1,700 have signed the petition asking y'all for to expand it 24/7. And so I'm here today asking y'all to follow through with that commitment for expanding the HEART program citywide for 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And I also have some of the folks who are your neighbors here in the city of Durham who've signed this, and the businesses and organizations, so you can be able to see some of what has been on paper that we want y'all to follow through with.
Thank you so much.
Have a copy for each of y'all, as well as the city manager.
If you give it to the clerk?
Yes.
You will pass it to us. Thank you. Yes, ma'am? If you will state your name.
Good evening, our mayor, our Mayor Pro Tem, our city council. My name is Manju Rajendran. I'm here to speak about expanding HEART. All of Durham deserves access to skilled, compassionate, unarmed care in moments of crisis. City of Durham's Community Safety Department HEART programs have been incredibly effective in this pilot year. Scaling the Durham Community Safety Department HEART project citywide with availability 24/7, it's a thing we've been talking about on the streets with absolutely thousands of people, and we crunched the numbers. We figured out that requiring additional staffing would require additional staffing of at least 52 full-time equivalents and additional funding of at least $7.8 million, but that minimal funding and staffing would likely not enable the Community Safety Department to maintain the high service levels that we've seen in this incredible pilot due to the additional challenges of staffing and operating 24/7. So our recommendation as the Have a HEART Coalition is to recommend staffing and expansion level to 70 full-time equivalents with additional funding of $10.7 million to sustainably fund and staff the Community Safety Department over the next three years to operate those HEART programs citywide 24/7, 365, at the high service levels that we've seen during this incredible pilot. And if passed as is, City Manager Wanda Page's proposed budget for fiscal year 2324, which contains so many amazing, exciting things that we're really proud of Durham for pushing forward, would put Durham on track for a three-year expansion from 2023 to '24 through the end of '26 that would meet the community's need, as reflected in the Community Safety Department's data dashboard and as echoed in the stories that we've heard from community residents out on the street and here in city council in the public budget hearings. We have laid out the details of how we did this math, and I'll pass it on to City Clerk Diana Schreiber to share with y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
You will just state your name, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the city council. My name is Cedric Craig, 803 Chapel Hill Road. I am the community organizer for Durham For All, and I'm here to affirm your advocacy for the budget item of regular community engagement funding. Over the last three months, I've came with hundreds of residents around Durham. Through my conversations, I have heard their frustration, their vulnerability, and their belief, and, sorry, and their belief that they are left out and in the dark around city government. It is vexing to want change and not having opportunity to regularly voice your concerns. The past few months, my organization has held community events with councilmembers sitting right here. There, we discuss and educate residents on the budget and politics within Durham. With the calls I would make after, folks would come out and describe a feeling of authenticity, a feeling of an inclusive space for the views of our residents, and that progress can be made in the city. If a small organization such as Durham For All can organize meetings like this, just imagine what the city could do with their budget. You can reach a much wider and diverse audience and hear from a more significant number of residents, allowing them to be seen and help create meaningful and engaging relationships. Government and residents should be on the same team. Simply put, I believe the residents of Durham are to be heard, appreciated, and the concern they act upon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Leiss, if you will come forward and state your name for me, please, sir, and your time will start.
Jonathan Leiss. Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, my name is Jonathan Leiss. I am a captain with 12 years of service in the Durham Fire Department. In my 12 years, I've only known one firefighter to leave Durham to go work for another local department. We take pride in being Durham firefighters. We take pride in our department's reputation for skillful and aggressive tactics in firefighting. None of us want to leave Durham, but still people are. So far this year, 17 Durham firefighters have left to pursue other opportunities, five of them are now working for a neighboring department. This is new, and this is different, and this is not good. When a firefighter leaves, it doesn't just cost money to train a replacement, it also costs time. In fact, depending on what time of year someone leaves, it costs 12 to 18 months of reduced staffing to replace them. Our academy is seven and a half months of training and only happens once a year. It is a long process simply to replace an experienced firefighter with a rookie, and that does not count the years of experience, on-the-job training, and advanced certifications that our members bring to other departments when they leave Durham. I have spoken with even more members of our department who are considering leaving for other local departments because of low morale and compression at the bottom of the pay scale and because of being in the wrong pay step, especially among members with fewer than six years of service. These are our current firefighters and the future drivers and officers without which a department cannot function. They are the future of this department, but they can't see their future here in Durham. The recruits who just graduated are filling vacancies created in 2021 and 2022. These 17 new vacancies won't be filled in the field until mid-2024, and if you do nothing, there will be more vacancies. Please take action now to reduce turnover. Please eliminate compression now by putting firefighters in the correct pay band, as Local 668 has proposed, because it is better, cheaper, and more effective to have an experienced firefighter on the truck now than an empty seat responding to emergencies for the next year as we train new recruits. Thank you.
All right. The next five names, Kyle O'Connor, Neil Short, or Shout, I'm sorry, Shout, Neil Shout, Meredith Carter, Jason Frolicker, and Jonathan Amara, in that order.
Good evening. My name is Kyle O'Connor. I'm a member of the Human Relations Committee with the Local 668. I've been with the department for seven years. I'm currently in the upper 40% of seniority in the department. We have 30-year retirement. I want to talk to you about the retention problem. You keep hearing pay, that's the first step. What Durham has done is create a perfect, is create the perfect employees to be poached by other departments. Between the call volume, the training, and the culture, we create the best firefighters here in Durham. You've even mentioned it yourself. We're proud of that, and other departments see that. Leadership 101 says that in order to run a successful organization, you need to invest in your people. The fact that we're trying to hire 60 firefighters, or 15% of our workforce right now, for $40,000 a year should be very telling. We're creating a younger and more inexperienced department, which, if continues, is liable to get somebody hurt or worse. Real quick, I'd like to tell you about some of our firefighters. I'm gonna tell you about Kendrick. He graduated from Central and stayed here for 11 years working for the Durham Fire Department. He's currently with another department, making more money as a promoted driver, a driver who sometimes bumps up to act captain, but does not get paid for it until his sixth consecutive 24-hour shift, but that's another story. Angela- Angelo. Angelo is a two-year firefighter here with Durham and recently became a Georgia Smoke Diver, which is a 60-day, uh, a six-day, 60-hour program designed for high-level firefighters. He is the first person from North Carolina to complete this training. People from all over the country come here, uh, go to Georgia in order to complete that training, and he's the first person from North Carolina in 62 classes since 1978 to complete it. He's in the process for another department right now. Aaron, a immigrant from Venezuela and the hardest-working person I have ever worked with, as far as knowledge, skills, and abilities, out of any job. He told me something really profound, uh, before he put in his resignation to go to Ohio. He said, "I never thought that I would feel embarrassed to tell somebody I was a firefighter." Last thing, these people that I just told you about, that's one station, one shift. That is my crew. Multiply that by 19 stations and three shifts. Please, as a, uh, to be consistent with the union, please put us in the right steps, but as a resident, I'd like to ask you to please invest in your employees.
Thank you. If you would state your name for me.
Uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name's Neil Shout. I'm a captain with the city. I've served for 21 years, 11 as a captain. Uh, I'd like to share a letter that the driver of my truck wrote when he left to go to work for the city of Cary, and it's Kendrick is the one I'm talking about. My name is Kendrick Campbell. I started my career with the Durham Fire Department on June 25th, 2012, almost 11 years ago. I've enjoyed my career here. The DFD offers great training, staff, and incredible workplace experience. Unfortunately, I had little option but to leave the DFD for a department that values its firefighters and shows that with better pay, benefits, and career opportunities and resources. I am at the point in my life where my family's needs come first, and I will be making more as a lateral entry firefighter than I am currently making as a promoted driver. I love the city of Durham, and during my time with the city, I've owned multiple homes around here. However, none of them were within the city itself. My DFD salary was never enough to pay for rent or mortgage inside the city that I served. That's a problem. We should be able to afford to live in the city we protect. Right now, Durham has the opportunity to make a difference and make necessary changes to retain fire department staff. We need city leadership to be proactive, not reactive. The DFD offers a higher level of service than any of the surrounding departments, and our reputation precedes us, but that reputation should be appreciated by competitive pay and benefits. Instead, we have a record number of firefighters leaving the fire department because they cannot pay their bills without working one or more part-time jobs. We are already away from home, um, away from our families more than other city employees, having to either work overtime shifts or a second job to simply make ends meet. And, uh, I'm sorry, to make ends meet should be embarrassing to our city leaders. Our neighbors, our neighboring departments are showing their appreciation by hiring well, well-trained, highly experienced Durham firefighters. Durham has experienced outstanding economic growth while your firefighters struggle to keep up with an ever-existing cost of living. For a city claiming to be so progressive, our leaders should be ashamed of how low pay and benefits are afforded to your public servants.
Thank you, Mr. Shout.
My name is Meredith Carter, and I'm a firefighter and also executive board member of the Local 668. I want to share with you the frustration that many of our firefighters felt watching the budget session on May 24th. While we appreciate Director Wynn's promise that the pay study in fiscal year '24 will be comprehensive, I need to clarify some of the numbers that were presented that day. The most important distinction that must be addressed is the difference between a market adjustment and a merit raise. A market adjustment is a necessary tool to keep, keep pace with surrounding departments and adjust pay for factors such as supply and demand and rising cost of living, and that is determined through a pay study. A merit raise is an earned reward for quality performance and an acknowledgement of our additional year of service and expertise, as well as our loyalty to the city. During Director Wynn's presentation, she pointed out that a firefighter hired in 2019 has seen a nominal salary increase of 31.2%. While this is true, it is lacking critical context. Over that same time period, the Durham livable wage increased from $15 per hour to $18.46 per hour. I am using the fiscal year '24 livable wage in this calculation, since most firefighters with that particular hire date will not receive their next merit raise until November, well into fiscal year '24. This demonstrates that the city of Durham had an increase in the cost of living of 23% since 2019. So, in real inflation-adjusted terms, this firefighter actually only is being paid 8.2% more than their very first day in the FIRE Academy as a probationary recruit. You may be thinking, "Well, it's still a raise," but I'd like to remind you that I am currently being paid $45,115. I want to share with you some of our neighboring department salaries. I would make more money if I left tomorrow and started over as a recruit at any of the following cities than I do now with Durham after more than four years of service. Knightdale, $57,000. Apex, $51,000. Wake Forest, $50,000. Cary, $48,000. Charlotte, $48,000. Morrisville, $48,000. Raleigh, $46,000. Zebulon, $46,000. Wilson, $45,170, a five-department station, or five-station department, serving a community of less than 50,000 people. Market raises and merit raises are two separate types of salary increases, and they cannot be conflated. They cannot be combined and passed off as a huge increase. We deserve fair market value as well as material acknowledgement of our years of service. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Fralicker. I'm a firefighter in with Local 668. Thank you, council, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm not going to get through my speech. It takes three minutes. I timed it. I talk as fast as I can, fellow New Yorker. It's not going to happen. So I'm just going to highlight one point. We're proud of this department's standards. Those standards are being lowered. We're going to introduce 38% of our department in the next two academies. Think about that, 38%. 120 people are going to be introduced in the next 18 to two, 18 months to two years. Is that the service the city deserves? All right? I echo the Police Benevolent Association. I, I, I believe they deserve it. We see what they do, we support them. But we're here because in that information, that firefighter Carter shared as well, we're being considered greedy because we're seeking raises. Is it greedy to put more food on the table for your kids? Is it greedy to send your kids to a daycare? Is it greedy to try to get them better clothes, a secondary education? Is it greedy to hear that council member Hyman and Middleton and Ms. Iya Shaboo, sorry if I said it wrong, they're talking about all these great things? We don't get to participate in them. We show up when something goes wrong, and that's our experience in Durham. We can't call you neighbors, we can't call you friends, we can't call you family. We're simply here for your worst day, and we'll never see the best day. We are told that we are greedy. Greed is an intense and selfish desire for something. What about what we're trying to do is selfish? What about the job we do is selfish? What about putting others before yourself is selfish? So I'm asking you, when you consider this, when you tell me 2% and $300, where's the selfishness in us to say, "I want more from my family. I want my kids to go to school." I would love to see that play those students did. Never going to see it. I didn't even know what was happening. I'm not part of the community. The reason I'm not part of the community is because, as she previously stated, we are below low income at our starting pay. If we can't afford two firefighters renting the same apartment, how are we going to afford a family of four, five, even sniffing the county line? We want to be here. It's y'all that's stopping us from being here. We're asking you to look at this. We know you want us here. We know you appreciate us. We appreciate everything you do, but what's stopping us is unless we get competitive pay, we are going to be serving other communities. Thank you.
Mr. Fromm. If you would state your name for me, sir.
I'm firefighter Jonathan Armada. I was one of 19 firefighters that graduated with FIRE Academy 31. I've been a sworn firefighter with Durham for two years, sworn in June of 2021, an employee of the city for three years. I'm currently at firefighter pay step zero. I'm a resident of Durham. I get paid $14.75 an hour. The city of Durham livable wage is $17.60 an hour. This shows the city does not value my time and abilities at the same minimum level as other city employees. Along with the city not valuing me as an employee deserving of livable wage, I'm seeing how the city let, lets the pay compression continue to negatively affect the firefighters of Durham. The compression issue that the city has not addressed correctly is already affecting firefighters of my academy. In the two years since being sworn, five firefighters from my academy have left the department because the step increases and accompanying pay raises that were promised to us have not been delivered. There is no pay incentive offered to them to stay. The five firefighters that left cost the city $350,000 in training. In order to fill the vacancies of those firefighters, the city will spend over $750,000 in overtime a year. To further demonstrate how the compression issue is affecting the department, Academy 32, the academy that graduated after my academy are at pay step one. A probationary firefighter from Academy 32 was assigned to my station. I spent countless hours training and guiding the probationary firefighter. During my two years, I've been cleared by the department, state, and Durham County EMS to provide advanced EMT care. I've become technical rescuer certified, and I'm on my way to become a fire driver for the department. The firefighter I trained currently has none of those qualifications, yet is at pay step one, while I'm still at pay step zero. A group of lateral firefighters hired in July of 2021 are also at pay step one. Soon they will be at pay step two. Currently, the 13 remaining firefighters that were sworn with me are steps behind those with less experience and less time with the city. These are two various, very obvious examples of the compression issue that we are asking the city to correct. I'm going. All right. Um, I love being a firefighter for Durham. Durham has also provided me with everything I need to be hired by neighboring departments. Durham has provided me with a reputation of a knowledgeable and skilled firefighter, a knowledgeable and skilled advanced EMT, a certified technical rescuer, and the training to become a fire driver. The one thing that is missing from the city is what was promised to all of us when we started our careers. Help raise the low morale, put us in our correct step, fix the compression issue.
Thank you, Mr. Fromm. We turn now to Phil Wiggins, Benita Green, Vanessa Mason-Evans, A.J. Williams, DeeDee Fields.
Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate this opportunity to come before you and speak today. My name is Phil Wiggins, and I'm a retired captain with the city of Durham Police Department. 27 years of service with the city of Durham. And I came to work in 1983 as a public safety officer and served in Durham since then, just retired in 1983. As an officer moving up through the ranks in the Durham Police Department, I also became a chaplain with Durham Police Department. I have personal experience and been part of abuse, pay compression, moving of actual anniversary dates to prevent raises. I watched officers' benefits disappear where, when they retire, they lose their healthcare benefits. Since my retirement in 2003, I have watched good officers leaving Durham Police Department for other agencies for better pay. And these departments they're leaving and going to are not as busy as in Durham, and, uh, these officers, uh, you know, don't want to leave. They want to stay in Durham and serve, but they can't afford to stay in Durham on the salaries that they're making, so they're leaving and going to other agencies. Durham is definitely in a crisis. I really don't have to tell you this. I think you, from what you've heard so far and what you deserve just being on council, that you know what's happening in the city of Durham with the police department and also with the fire department. I don't believe the big issue is recruiting, trying to get new people to come in, but I think the big issue is retention, keeping officers here. With people seeing officers leaving in record numbers from early retirement, transferring to other agencies, getting out of law enforcement altogether, who wants to jump on a sinking ship? Until you fix retention, it's going to get a lot worse for Durham. As chaplain of, I love Durham Police Department, I love law enforcement, the 911 operators, citizens of Durham, and day doesn't go by that I'm not on my knees asking God to guide me first to make, help make Durham a better place. And I pray for our leadership in this, in the department and our city and county leaders. I pray and hope that you as leaders in the city government will trust in the Lord with all your heart, lean not on your understanding, but trust in Him, and He will direct your path. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chaplain Wiggins.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem, Middleton, and all members of the dais. My name is Benita Green, and I am president of the Merritt Moore Community Development Corporation. The Merritt Moore Community Development Corporation, formerly known as the Merritt Moore Community Club, mission is, the Merritt Moore CDC and its diverse community exists for charitable and educational purposes to improve the overall quality of life for the poor, underprivileged, and disenfranchised by strengthening the bonds amongst our residents. Some of the things that this organization has been advocating for, for many years since I was a child and my father was president of the organization, was sidewalks and infrastructure improvements along Cheek Road, which is a very narrow road that is lacking sidewalks. Yet we have people who walk these roads every day because there's no public transportation in our community, so they have to walk these very narrow paths on the side of the road, which are typically covered by vegetation, and we have all sorts of traffic coming through, driving very aggressively. So I'm here tonight to ask for your support in providing these much-needed infrastructure updates along Cheek Road in the Merritt Moore community, which also houses, houses an elementary school, and I see children walk into that school on a very dangerous road. So I'm asking for your support in approving the infrastructure updates in sidewalks and street calming devices in the Merritt Moore community. And I want to say, my last few seconds is that I am full support of the policemen's organization and the firefighters. They deserve their pay. They put their lives on the line every day to save all of your lives and mine. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and city council. I'm Vanessa Mason-Evans, the chair of the Bradtown Community Association. I come to you in hopes that y'all will say vote yes on the sidewalks and the traffic calming assessments. We need more stoplights in our community, crosswalks with safety lights, and crossing for streets. Of course, you know we have a lot of new developments that are coming to Bradtown, which we're happy to see coming to Bradtown. We also have schools that need safe walking spaces. We have people right now who are walking in the street with strollers, as well as wheelchairs that are riding in the streets, because we have a lack of sidewalks. So we're hoping that with this funding, we're going to get more sidewalks. We know it's not going to all come at one time, but we hope each year that we can have funding to come into our community to help build more sidewalks to make the community more safe. We also know through talking with, um, GO Triangle and, um, the transit system that we can't have bus stops or shelters without sidewalks. They're not going to put them in the dirt. So the sidewalks will help to put more, um, bus stops and shelters within our community. And we thank y'all for coming out, when y'all did come out, to view the community and their needs and seeing that there are a lot of people who walk on goat paths, um, in the Bradtown area. I also too want to support our police department, as well as our fire department. It's these people here who go into the fires when we're running from the fires. So please keep these things in mind. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, council members. My name is A.J. Williams. Uh, I'm a resident of Durham, 27707. Um, I'm here to share with you and begin with a word from Asada Shakur. It is our duty to fight for our freedom. It is our duty to win. I'm starting off with that word because it's sacred. In fact, to me, it's a mandate, and it speaks to the angelic troublemaking that I deem as my life's work, as, as my calling. Um, and so often, it feels like our people are arriving to this podium in particular to tell their, their trauma, their most devastating stories during the moment of crises, but I'm actually here to offer us a chance to celebrate. I'm actually here to offer us a chance to celebrate. The HART program can be a real manifestation of a win for our city. And we need a win right now in Durham. And the nation is looking to us, and we have a really special opportunity. Many people know I'm the co-director of an organization called Durham Beyond Policing. And our formation, undeniably, audaciously.
A.J., sorry to interrupt. If you back away from the mic a little bit, we'll hear you better. Just like, yeah. Maybe not quite that far. If you get too close, it just gets garbly. We can't understand you. Yeah, thanks, sorry.
Y'all can hear me? I'm part of a formation called Durham Beyond Policing, and we undeniably believe in dreaming and imagining not only what's possible, but the means by which we can manifest and actualize that reality. And safety is a reality that needs to be a reality for our people. Nearly every black person I know my age has been triggered by the blue and red lights of cop cars and the howling shrill of sirens, whether we were actually engaging in criminalized behavior or not. We've all felt traumatized by those lights. And so one day, as our staff was audaciously dreaming, we said, wouldn't it be cool if the HART vehicles had soft green and purple lights? And when they went through traffic, that the vehicles played melodic music that actually reassured our spirits? And when we saw one pass, we could celebrate with gladness in our hearts that one of our folks' sacred lives would be saved. It's also true that we are the ones we've been waiting for, and HART to me is a manifestation of that. The list you saw earlier was a list of over 1,700 Durham residents, faith leaders, businesses, just regular, everyday people who support the full expansion of the HART program. So thank you in advance for helping us secure the bag for our people.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Yes. Mayor O'Neill and distinguished guests and Mayor Pro Tem for, I don't have a speech or anything, but what I do have is a testimony about the HART.
Ma'am, if you would just state your name for me.
I'm sorry. DeeDee Fields. And I'm a resident of Durham County. I'm a single mom, 54-year-old, of four kids. So I want to speak to this program and why I think that they definitely should keep it funded and it should be an ongoing thing. I have a 20-year-old son living at home. I tend to talk fast when I get nervous, so, and I'm very passionate about this. Young black, he's 20 years old, and we've already had our run-in, when I say with the law. My only hope at that time was, I don't care what you did at that time, can you just come home? And thank God, he made it home. I said, we'll deal with the repercussions later. But at that time, when I could hear the officer talking to him on the phone, I'm scared to death. So we made it through that. Now, fast forward, I have a 15-year-old son at home. He was born nine pounds, and he's 274 pounds right now. So he's big, he has a lot of hair on his head, he's very bulky, he's muscular, he's bow-legged, and when he walks, he's very gentle, but he walks just like, you know, it may scare somebody. So the HART program, I think they had only been in existence for about six months at that time. So my son was going through some things, and I saw a very kind of like scary side of him. So I took him to the police station, and I said, can you please, please help me? Now, what I liked most is that, yes, he came out, had his gun, all of that stuff, but that's not what my son responded to. That didn't even faze him. He didn't care at that time. But what I did end up getting was these two cards because they were armed with something else. They were armed with resources and information. They had a whole team waiting on me, which is the, was the HART program, is the HART program. They stayed with us, they didn't, they respected my feelings, respected his feelings, eight seconds, and they followed us through. They didn't just turn me loose. Once they were finished, they followed up within 24 hours. They walked with me, they didn't walk in my shoes, but they walked with us. So what I'm saying to you is, I want you to take that into consideration, that if the policing doesn't change, you have to arm them with something different. All these kids that appear that you talked about today, if you don't change, then they're going to keep killing them, they won't be here to do the work that needs to be done. So we need it, we want it, we're asking for transformation. Keep and support the HART program. And I'm leaving you with this. What if it was your kid? How would you want him to be treated? Or her? If they were approached in that manner? Think about that. What if it was your child?
Thank you so much. The next, the next five names. Virginia Wortman. Cole Atwood. A-T-W-O-O-D, I believe. Joe Meinholtz. Rebecca Bratcher. And Anita Scott Neville.
Good evening, council members. I'm Virginia Wortman of ZIP Code 27705. I'm here to request that the council make definitive plans to expand the HART program both citywide and 24/7. As part of the campaign to expand awareness and support for the HART program, I've spoken to many, many residents who voiced unequivocal support for the work this program is doing. Several residents also gave me permission to relay their stories because they were unable to be here tonight. I hope these stories highlight the desperate need for programs of care. A mother of two told me her older daughter suffered a mental health crisis, but when she called 911 to get help, an officer arrived and tackled her 80-pound, 14-year-old child to the ground. She said her younger daughter witnessed this, and it still wakes from nightmares, screaming about her older sister being dragged away by police. A resident of North Gate Park said he didn't have anyone to call when his brother is having a mental health crisis, as he is terrified of his brother being institutionalized. According to the HART pilot, North Gate Park is not covered. A person working at a local business mentioned they had been repeatedly followed and harassed by a visibly unwell individual. They are scared for their own safety, but also for this other person who is clearly suffering. They don't want this person to be jailed for mental illness and repeatedly mentioned that they wish the HART program could help them. In addition to the expansion of HART, I beg you to consider the simultaneous expansion and improvement of yet more affordable housing, better infrastructure, and public health, public mental health resources. While I am genuinely elated to see and hear the success of this brilliant program, I do not believe it will be sustainable unless we invest in all aspects of compassionate care for the people. Thank you.
How are y'all doing? My name's Cole Atwood. I'm a, I live, I'm a Durham resident. I live at 2707, duh. Sorry, I'm kind of nervous, but, yeah. So I'm going to talk to y'all about an experience that I had in Durham with the police. And, but before that, I want to say I have a personal investment in the HART program because I have family members who have had drug problems and have had mental health crises. But we didn't have anything like that. I'm from Mount Olive, North Carolina. We don't have anything like that in that small town. But, so, I love the HART program for that. And also, I would like to give a trigger warning for this because I'll be talking about police violence. So on May 17th, driving around to the roundabout between Hope Valley Road and University Drive, I witnessed DPD officers pulling a black man out of his car, resulting in five to six officers kneeling on his head and body on the hot concrete of the street. I was horrified at what could happen because of this incident. Sorry, I get kind of worked up. But I approached them, recording, telling them I was recording, just in case anything happened, and to get their attention, calling for them to stop. They did not stop. One of them placed his hands on me and told me he was arrest me if I kept talking for what I was doing. I don't know. Perfectly legal to record the police, North Carolina. It appeared to be over a drug possession, as one of the officers arrogantly held out and showed me a container potentially containing drugs so as to justify this instance of DPD's brutality against Durham's black community. But it's not my concern about whether or not this individual had or hadn't done anything wrong that does not justify that brutality. This reminded me and was a demonstration of the ways in which police are neither equipped nor intend to mitigate harm. Not only that, but how they exacerbate, create violence and harm, and how policing as an institution will not allow compassionate, caring response. Therefore, the HART program needs to be funded 24/7 and available citywide. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. My name is Joe Meinholtz. I'm new to Durham, and I want to speak in support of the HART program being fully funded. Also, in my part of the city, 27705, I came here to be at Duke Divinity School, and I came here from Minneapolis. And earlier, a council member outside spoke to how we can be a leader in Durham for the country. And I, coming from Minneapolis and the litany of killings by police that we march and march three times a year, I've talked to people back there about HART, and they see hope coming from here. And so I encourage you and invite you to that vision that other people have spoke of. The vision, not just to do a pilot, but to fund it three years and then sit down again with groups like Durham Beyond Policing to invest in even more nonviolent strategies to make sure that citizens don't have a path to jail, but instead have a path to health, have a path to affordable housing. All these things give me so much hope for living here, and I'm so grateful to meet you all tonight. Supporting the HART program, to be in all parts of the city for many years to come so that we can have peacemakers on the streets with resources. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bratcher, and I just want to let everybody know, after Ms. Neville, we have to take a 10-minute break for our closed captioning folk, so we still have about these many cards for folk who are waiting to speak, okay? All right. Thank you. You may proceed, Ms. Bratcher.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Bratcher. I'm a resident of Durham, 27701. I'd also like to give a trigger warning before I start. My brother Charlie experienced his first episode of psychosis on New Year's Eve 2016. Because it was the middle of the night on a holiday, my mom didn't know what to do besides call the police. My brother and Will and I did our best to keep Charlie calm for over an hour while we waited for them to arrive. When the three armed cops walked into the house, they made us leave Charlie alone with them, and we could hear that he was starting to get worked up again. As they walked into the police car, all I could do was watch tensely and pray that none of their hands moved toward a gun. My brothers and I are members of the Chickasaw Nation, and I can only imagine how much scarier it would have been if we were born with darker skin. I can only imagine how much scarier this situation would be for anyone with darker skin than me. They told us that they were taking him to a hospital, but Charlie ended up in jail that night. No one deserves to be in jail during a mental health crisis. He deserved better care than that. We all deserve access to compassionate, skilled, unarmed care in the event of a crisis, no matter when it may happen. Since then, Charlie has continued to struggle with his mental health and has had more interactions with law enforcement during times of crisis. I live in fear of the day that I'll get a call that a police officer has ended Charlie's life when what he really just needed was help. Everyone deserves access to care that can help us rather than make things worse. The people of Durham deserve the safety and security of knowing that we can access a crisis response team at any time that will lead to support, healing, and recovery. Y'all are the ones that have the power to make this happen for us. We need the HART program 24/7. We need it citywide. We need it fully funded. Thanks.
Good evening, Durham, my beloved community, and a special greeting to the firefighter who lamented earlier about not feeling a part of this community. In fact, you are. Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem, Middleton, and esteemed members of the City Council, I am Anita Scott Neville, a Durham native, and the director of Hayti Reborn. It is a privilege to come before you this evening to offer encouragement for an affirmative vote for the proposed $10 million in your budget for the benefit of rebuilding Hayti. Since its creation more than two years ago, Hayti Reborn strives to work with and in alignment of Durham's comprehensive plan that is rooted in principles of equity and well-being for all of its citizens, with an emphasis on the restoration of the historic Hayti district. To that end, we recognize that all actions that are a part of that restoration must reflect responsibility and demonstrate a community-led process. The healing that will result will effectively drown out residual pain from the urban removal of the 1960s and echo resurrection of our heritage for generations to come. In fact, through a unified effort with other organizations who share our vision, we will be able to identify and advocate for the city's response to the repair of spiritual and physical harm done to Hayti and its residents. Your approval of this funding for the revitalization of Hayti will write a good word on the pages of history and will reflect your effort to seize this time of opportunity in the midst of rapid change for our city. If not now, when Durham's leadership mirrors that of the founding leaders who made Hayti a flagship community in a pivotal time in history, when? Thank you for your consideration and affirmative vote.
Thank you. All right, everybody. We'll take about a 10-minute break to give our closed captioners time to regroup, and we'll start back at 9:15, 9:14. 9:14, 9:15.
You're invited to attend an upcoming one-of-a-kind art gallery opening reception, featuring pieces by Durham's long-term residents, immigrants, and refugees. The exhibit is called Piece by Piece: Art, Belonging, and Community. It will take place as part of the June 16th Third Friday Art Walk at the Durham Bottling Company from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's located at 506 Ramser Street. The goal of the exhibit was to bring together individuals from various backgrounds to share their cultural stories and to make art together. Our community engagement team and the Neighborhood Improvement Services Department used a $40,000 grant from Welcoming America to host collaborative art classes for the participants. The resulting works of art reflect the cultures of Colombia, Peru, Dominican Republic, Spain, Morocco, Mexico, Venezuela, and many other countries, as well as the lives of the artists here in Durham. To find out more, visit durhamcommunityengagement.org.
All right. We are back in the nine o'clock. You know, I never used a gavel as a judge, but we seem to have to use it in the council chambers. Yep. We are ready to get started. Our next five speakers, we will begin with Mr. Robert E. Gaddy, Sarah DeAmato, Walter Jackson, Katie Craig, and Nancy Lauer. And if you just say your name and then you can begin. Two minutes, and I know I cut you all down, so I'm not going to cut you off, but we're not going to go into the three-minute. We'll give you a few extra seconds to kind of finish up. I won't cut you off. But, uh, Mr. Gaddy.
Greetings, Madam Mayor. Distinguished members of the City Council. My name is Robert Gaddy and tonight I stand before you as the President of the Durham County Fraternal Order of Police, representing over 500 members. I also stand to you before you as a retired police captain, but moreover, a resident and a citizen of Durham. We are wanting to discuss and talk about a very urgent matter as it relates to staffing, as it relates to retention and recruitment of qualified police officers. This critical issue is important to us because we're in dire straits. We're losing officers in the one-to, zero-to-four-year range. Also, now we're seeing highly experienced officers with 10 years of experience or more. Attracting qualified personnel has become an increasingly challenged task as we're losing, as our neighbors around us in Wake County, Orange County, have offered more highly competitive bonuses, they've offered higher entry-level pay. This alarming trend needs your immediate attention. Right now, the Durham Police Department is minus 146 officers. Six of the officers left last month. Five of them went to another agency. My lodge conducted a survey of the 500 members. We had 116 responses. Of those 116 responses, 32 of these people are looking for other employment. Speaking with the department's spokesperson, by the end of the year, there's 31 officers projected to leave Durham Police Department, either leaving altogether or just retirement. We need to rectify this situation. And I think what you heard from the fire department, we're experiencing the same exact thing. We need fully look at our starting pay for the recruits, raising that, implementing the appropriate market adjustments for all ranks, addressing the pay compression issue, revise proposed increases. While we're appreciative for the $300 and the 2% increase, that's not going to help retain folks. Number five, compare the compensation with other agencies. We need to make sure that we're doing as much as Wake County's doing, as Orange County is doing. Wake and Orange both did a 6% increase and Orange actually reduced the medical benefits. And also recognize the work disparities. As everybody, you've heard, our folks work hard. They work hard and even despite everything going on, they give you the same amount of service. And last, address the step plan. The plan can be adjusted for minimal impact, financial impact on the citizens, but at the end of the day, we need to get as many police officers to keep them and also attract new ones. And so, I appeal to you to do what we entrusted you to do as the citizens when we voted you in office and take care of us, take care of our folks and take care of our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Gaddy. Ms. DeAmato, Mr. Jackson, Mrs. Craig, and Ms. Lauer.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and members of the City Council. I am Sarah DeAmato. I am the Program Director of the Legal Aid Eviction Diversion Program in the Durham Office. We are, I am here to ask you to continue to fund our program. We've here, I always come in here with my notes and then I know I'm going to change based on what I hear the people talk before me. And one of the things that I keep hearing people say is, "We can't afford to live in Durham." It's not just the salaries, it's the rising rents. And one of the things that our program does by keeping people in their homes, it helps to stabilize that rental market. Every eviction means that a rent is going to go up. So if we can keep people housed, then their rents don't go up. So that is one thing that while we have, the city, this budget is funding all of these programs to build new projects and build new housing and to maintain and help preserve tenancies in Durham. One of the things that's really vital is our program and the way in which we reach tenants who are facing housing insecurity. The City Council has funded our courthouse clinic and for members of the community who are not aware of this courthouse clinic, every day that court is open in the Durham courthouse from 9:00 to 12:00, we have attorneys and intake specialists available to meet with people to determine if they're eligible in order to represent them. In many cases, we are able to represent them that same day. That doesn't always mean we win. A lot of times, what that means is that we give them another two weeks to get paid to move out. A lot of what we do is giving folks extra time. One thing of note is that this program, our success in it has not come overnight. This program has been funded for the past, well, since 2017, it's continued to be expanded. And one of the things that is happening these days is that, just as a few notes, and we're asking you to continue funding our program, last month, we had in Durham Court, there were 84 cases that were on for district court appeals. And of those 84 tenants facing eviction, 61 of them had legal representation. And so, in that case, we're going to ask for you to continue our funding. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. My name is Walter Jackson. I'm a proud resident of the City of Durham. I do not envy you your task. I want to commend the manager for the budget that she has submitted. It's a budget that recognizes the many challenges facing us here in Durham and also the many needs that we have. As I've listened tonight, I've listened to people advocate for a number of pressing needs and I support many of those needs, to include the HART program, the need to continue to compensate our city employees well, who do such a great job. I meant to particularly commend both the employees of the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk for the outstanding work you do. It is not an enviable task. My primary mission this evening, however, is to speak to the need for restoration and revitalization of the Hayti community and Hayti Reborn. I grew up in Durham and every year, from the fourth grade through the 12th grade, I walked either along Fayetteville Street or across Fayetteville Street to school and saw the many businesses that were in that community and the economic vitality and jobs that they represented. It's hurtful to me at this time to see the current state of Fayetteville Street. So I ask that you, in your juggling of all these priorities, please keep Fayetteville Street and the need to revitalize that community in mind. I thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Katie Craig. I'm the State Director with NC-Perg, a statewide public interest advocacy organization that works to build a healthier, safer, and cleaner future for all North Carolinians. I'm here today speaking as a representative of our over 2,000 supporters that reside here in Durham, as well as a former Durham resident myself, to ask that City Council include the funding requested by the city's Solid Waste Management Department for two key positions, including Public Information and Communication Analyst, as well as a Code Enforcement Officer, as a critical first step to addressing the city's and our state's plastic pollution problem. As many of you may know, we live in a society that loves our stuff and loves convenience, but the combination means that we are constantly creating waste, some of which has major consequences on our communities, our health, and our environment. In particular, single-use plastics are handed to us pretty much everywhere you go, from a bag at the store, to utensils in your takeout, to your morning coffee cup. All these things we use for just a few minutes before tossing them away. Only when it comes to plastic, there is no away. Plastics do not biodegrade in our environment, which means that they last for hundreds of years. And to make matters worse, less than 9% of all plastic ever created has actually been recycled, meaning the other 90% is overfilling our landfills, littering our streets and parks, and ending up in our waterways, as well as harming our own wildlife and our own health. Luckily, the solution is actually quite simple. We just need to use less plastic, starting by eliminating the worst types and moving towards implementing reusable infrastructure where we can. The funding requested by the city's Solid Waste Management Department for these positions would go towards coordinating waste reduction, reuse, and recycling initiatives and campaigns to address single-use items and other waste. So I urge members of this committee to fund this position as important first step in the process to address plastic and other single-use wastes. Thank you so much for my time and your consideration.
Hello, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem, Milton, and council members. My name is Nancy Lauer. I am speaking here today to urge you to fund the Solid Waste Management Department's requests for two positions, a Public Information and Communications Analyst and a Code Enforcement Officer. In fiscal year 2021 to 2022, Durham threw away 365,556 tons of municipal trash. That's just over 2,000 pounds of trash for each person living in Durham. 2,000 pounds of trash for me, 2,000 pounds of trash for each of you, and 2,000 pounds of trash for each person in this room. It's easy and convenient to throw our trash away until we reckon with where away is. For us, that place is not in Durham, but over 90 miles away, in the small, historically black community of Snow Hill in Sampson County. It's easy and convenient to throw our trash away because someone else is bearing the burden of the truck traffic, the reduced property values, the rodents, the odors, the buzzards, the air and water pollution, and the loss of community that comes with living next to the largest or one of the largest landfills in the United States. At a Sampson County Board of Commissioners meeting this past April, a community member expressed Sampson County is not the trash dump of the United States. However, it's been the trash dump of the United States. The month before, Larry Sutton, the President of the Sampson County NAACP Chapter, initiated a moment of silence for people who have died with health effects believed to be from the landfill in Sampson County. The Sampson County landfill has somewhere between 10 and 20 years of operating life left, before it reaches its capacity. History and research tell us what happens next. We fill up the Sampson County landfill and a new landfill will be permitted and opened in another community of color. I'm speaking here today to urge you to do everything you can to move Durham away from needless landfilling and to expand the capabilities of Durham's Solid Waste Management Department. The Solid Waste Management Department's requested positions are the first step in this transition. The Public Information and Communications Analyst would develop and coordinate waste reduction, reuse, and recycling initiatives and campaigns. The Code Enforcement Officer would implement and enforce...
Thank you, Ms. Lauer.
Sorry. I see these positions as the first step in this transition and I thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next five names, Michelle Nolan on Virgery Street. First name, Michelle. Nolan, Ms. Nolan, Ms. Fay Calhoun. Ms. Fay Calhoun, Allison Simpson, Casey Rowe, Kate Gonzalez-Ridding.
Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to the community this evening. I'm here to ask the Council to add two positions to the budget that were requested by the Solid Waste Management Department, the Public Information and Communications Analyst and the Code Enforcement Officer. And I'd like you to consider four justifications for adding these positions to the budget. First, there is much confusion across the community regarding what can be disposed of, what can be recycled, and what alternatives for responsible reuse and substitutes for single-use plastics are available. Secondly, Durham is growing rapidly, and our solid waste management infrastructure is not keeping up. We know this because litter is everywhere across the City of Durham. We have only one Code Enforcement Officer for nearly 300,000 residents and nearly 8,000 businesses, and we have no staff that are dedicated to public outreach and education on this topic, a point that perhaps Mayor O'Neill made this evening by asking all of us to properly replace our recycling bins on Waste Pickup Day. These positions are needed to reduce waste, improve the quality of life, and improve the health of our community. Number three, trash is expensive. Cleanups by hired staff downtown and hundreds of volunteers across the community, including Keep Durham Beautiful and Elrby Creek Watershed Association, are part of that expense. And here in Durham, we pay twice for our trash, first for carting things to the landfill, and second through increased recycling fees that are necessitated by the extra labor required to remove inappropriately recycled materials and truck that to the very same landfill in Sampson County. Fourth, these positions further the city's climate goals of reducing greenhouse gases and its commitment to environmental justice. I'd like to note that plastic manufacturing, landfills, and waste incinerators are located in environmental justice communities, and we cannot improve their health without reducing the generation of waste. These positions have been requested for four years by the Solid Waste Management Department. The EAB, the Environmental Affairs Board, has supported this request, and these positions are necessary to educate the public about waste reduction, proper recycling and disposal, work with businesses, and where necessary, enforce the law. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan. Ms. Fay?
Ms. Fay Calhoun. My name is Fay Calhoun. I'm a Haitai community homeowner and an advocate for what is extremely important to the African-American community in this city and maybe even across the country. We, Haitai is such a unique area. It's African-American heritage, a heritage that we must be proud of, we must preserve, and we must recognize and acknowledge. I'm so happy today that funding is being considered for the rebuilding and the upgrading of this community, specifically the Fayetteville Street corridor. A document describing the desires, needs, plans, and intentions of community stakeholders has been submitted. The strength and dedication of each community group was included in that, in that document. Speaking with one voice, we are dedicated to assure that this funding, if we receive it, will repair and restore structures that have been neglected and abandoned due to the loss of generational wealth, the loss of homes, and over 100 businesses in our area. This loss, as a result of policies and laws well-described in a book by Richard Rothstein entitled "The Color of Law," is acknowledged by this budget request and appreciated by those that will benefit, including all the citizens of Durham, that will finally have an improved destination to increase the economy, attract visitors, sustain commercial development, and improve the security of this historic area, Haitai. We salute this possible funding as a partnership with the city that will benefit city residents, especially the youth, that may choose to pursue lucrative careers, either in the trades or to pursue studies on the effect of budget allocations and policy changes on communities.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Ms. Calhoun, we appreciate it. Ms. Allison Simpson, Casey Rowe, and Kate Gonzalez-Ridding.
Hi, my name is Casey Rowe. I've been a Durham resident for 14 years, and I love this city. I wanted to echo the calls for affordable housing, living wages for all, Haitai reborn, and safe public transit. But I came here tonight in support of the HEART program. I'm very proud that Durham has embraced the HEART pilot program and that we have the opportunity to be a leader on the national stage in compassionate, skilled, unarmed crisis response. We know that not all disabilities are visible. We know that mental health issues cannot always be quickly identified. I want to feel that I can call for help and resources when I see someone in need in Durham and feel confident that this will not put them in any additional danger or risk of escalating the situation. I believe the HEART program has shown that in many cases, skilled unarmed responders are the appropriate response, and I ask for the Council to make HEART fully funded and available citywide and 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Kate Gonzalez-Ridding. I'm a resident of Durham. I'm here to express my deepest gratitude for the HEART program and ask that it be fully funded 24/7 and in all areas of Durham. I've spent much of the last 10 years journeying with people experiencing homelessness and educating others about trauma-informed care. I've seen too many people I care about handcuffed and put in the back of a police car to be taken to the hospital to receive mental health care. That is trauma. I'm asking that the HEART program be fully funded and in all areas of Durham because you cannot schedule a crisis. I'm also here to ask that you prioritize the Vision Zero Durham Plan. Funding both of these initiatives will save lives of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with Ms. Larissa Seibel, followed by Katrina Bernaus, John Orth, Andrea Miele, and Latisha Faison.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and City Manager. You have a big job before you to meet all the needs of our community and to, and I want to recognize all the citizens who have spoken so eloquently. I do want to bring up something in addition with Legal Aid at the courthouse. I've been going for two years, at least weekly, to help people negotiate the courts. And we've got just an extraordinary group of young attorneys who can represent people the same day, the same morning, the same few minutes before their court date. They are flying around those courtrooms and helping people get a continuance, just a few weeks to get some money together to wait for social services and other groups for help to be able to save their homes. And people are coming, more and more are coming. It used to be in Durham years ago, you could get another apartment if you lost your home. You can't do that anymore. People are coming, almost, you know, I, I think about three-quarters of the people on the list, about 72 people were on the list. It seemed like about three-quarters of them showed up the other day. And it's because there's nowhere else for them to go. They've got to hang on to that apartment. And so having an additional attorney at Legal Aid would be extremely helpful to the people who've gone through the loss of homes due to eviction, and some have lost their homes and they're actually homeless. And so I hope that you will fund the requests from Legal Aid in Durham. They are doing amazing work. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Ms. Bernaus, Katrina Bernaus.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tempore, and Council members. I'm Katrina Bernaus. I'm a student at Duke, and I encourage you to support the Solid Waste Management Department's request to hire a Public Information and Communications Analyst and a Code Enforcement Officer. I grew up five miles from Chester, Pennsylvania, the location of the nation's largest waste incineration plant, where Black and low-wealth residents have been forced to breathe toxic chemicals in their air for decades. It wasn't until university that I learned more about the vast quantity of waste that we each produce and the ways in which plastic waste has negatively impacted our communities and the health of communities like Chester and Sampson County, where Durham sends its waste. I wish my local government had supported our community and taught us and educated us on the negative impacts of single-use plastics and how to properly reduce and recycle waste. Durham has a chance to do better by its residents. Around 90% of plastic is sent to landfill or incineration or ends up in our waterways and marine environment. Plastics impose unnecessary costs on Durham's government and local businesses. Plastic bags alone cost over $2 million annually to Durham businesses and the government to purchase landfill and clean up, to avoid these outcomes and reduce Durham's solid waste and associate environmental health and a financial costs. Durham needs clear communication on waste reduction, recycling, and the why behind these actions. Effective communication strategies require hiring, require hiring trained and dedicated individuals. A communications professional can create materials that provide Durham residents with specific actions to reduce waste, like properly sorting recycling and bringing their own reusable bags to the store. Similar transition programs, like in Charleston, South Carolina, have already proven to actively reduce plastic waste consumption and reduce the prevalence of plastic in the local environment. I hope that you take the time to invest in Durham's well-being and fund these positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and members of the Council. Thank you for the work you do every day, day in and day out, for our community. It's greatly appreciated. My name is Andrea Miele. I'm a 26-year resident of Durham, currently living in the 27705 area code. I ride my bicycle 10 miles every day or walk every day for my health and recreation, and I'm keen on seeing the streets and roads in Durham designed to be safe and friendly for me and all people riding bikes and/or walking. I know I share this desire with residents throughout Durham, and I'm excited to see the proposed investment of $34.4 million in the capital improvements program for sidewalks, bicycle facilities, and traffic calming, plus another $5.5 million focused on sidewalks and traffic calming in equitable and green infrastructure priority neighborhoods. I've traveled to other communities throughout the world that have made a decision to design their streets for people biking and walking, and I truly hope Durham can get there. I believe it can. This budget proposal is an important step forward for our safety, climate change, individual and collective health, and our community. I urge you to please support these investments in this budget and to continue funding these projects as we have, as we complete networks of protected bike lanes, sidewalks, slow streets, and safe crossings throughout Durham. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
John Orth, 1118 Gaston Manor Drive in Carolina Harbors in Durham. I'm here to support additional funding for your first responders, both police and fire department. We have seen excessive increases in crime in our neighborhood in the last couple of years. The police are underfunded and not responding. The last event was a report for a break-in in progress. It took three 9/11 calls in 30 minutes to get a police officer there. We are totally underserved and a part of this community. We think Durham, as well as southeast Durham, deserves better. The idea that 2.7% increase in a police budget, when inflation is six or more percent, is unsustainable. It's not real. We don't really understand how you can justify that. There's a major change necessary to look at how you finance police and how you finance your first responder services. There's over 2,000 retired professionals in Carolina Harbors, many of whom would love to volunteer to help in some capacity, dozens of law enforcement people, professionals of all nature. And yet, when we propose it, it's blown off, rejected, not really considered. I'd like to support and propose that you have a task force of retired law enforcement people from all sources, retired police from Durham, from all parts of the country that live in Carolina Harbors, and recommend to you how you can not only improve your police force and your, attract new officers and be able to retain those that you have, but how are you going to fund them? If you listen to the gentlemen from the Police Veteran Association, you're looking at a 20% salary increase to be able to be competitive, not 2.7%.
Thank you, Ms.
We can help out with that. And just on a positive note, the first responders we have from the fire department in our neighborhood are the only first responders we have. They do an excellent job. If I can be of help to organize a task force like that, I'm more than willing to try. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lauer. Ms. Faison, and we'll call the next group of names.
Hi, my name is Latisha Faison. I'm an East Durham native of 43 years. I currently stay at 27713. I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous, y'all. In support of expanding the HEART program 24 hours, fully funding and, because when my son had a crisis in 2021, the HEART program was not there. I had to call 911, and I thought the ambulance was coming, but instead, I got four officers that came running to my house with their hands on their gun. My son had currently just got out of prison from doing 11 and 1/2 years, so I did not let them get him the first time, but the second time I did. And when they came to pick him up, they put him in the back of the police car to take him to the hospital, where all he needed was some help. He was having a psychotic episode. So yeah, that's why I'm for the fully funding of the HEART program. I just want to use my last minutes as a mom of gun violence to say that I hear, I appreciate everything y'all have been doing far as trying to prevent the gun violence and stuff, but y'all also come and say that y'all want the community to speak out on the gun violence. But I have heard from several people that we don't get responses. Responses, me, myself, I have reached out to several of the community councils. Mr. Mark Anthony, Ms. Elaine on December 2021, I haven't got a response back. I would just say that let's all hold each other accountability. Let's all be accountable. If you want the community to respond, could we please get a response back because we are all in this together?
Thank you. With our next set of names, Ms. Allison Simpson, going back to her, she's not here. No One Day, I'm sorry.
I think Ms. Simpson left.
She did. Ms. Simpson left.
Yes.
Okay.
She left at the break.
All right. N H A W N D I Smith, Donna Fred, she already, okay. Okay. Donna Fred, followed by Algen Holloway. Someone did not put their name, but they stay at 622 Delaware Avenue. Tony Mason. Tony Mason and Rachel Karasik.
Good evening, Council Mayor. It's been a long night for all of us, and I'm here in support of the budget for Brag Town with the increased need for sidewalks and safety. Just today, I was meeting someone on Roxborough Road, and I walked. And actually, I had to wait for about two light cycles because it is so dangerous to cross Roxborough Road with a sidewalk. Now imagine the areas in Brag Town that does not have sidewalk. We have to really pay attention as we're increasing motor cars, bicycles, and people walking to safety. And it is really imperative for areas that never had sidewalk. And there's a lot of areas. So I'm in support of all of those in the budget that need sidewalk, especially in Brag Town. And also in support of the officers and the firefighters, who when we need them, they show up, and we really need to support them. So that's my request tonight, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Algen Holloway. Born, reared in Durham. And my family's been here since pretty much forever. I'm a proud Durhamite, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Merrick Moore community and the improvements that need to be done therein. And I'd like to commend the manager for proposing these improvements. And I'd like to also speak in favor of the firefighters, who my brother was one, and my uncle was one of the original members of Station 4, and also the police people that used to be out when I used to work down there. And Durham is unique in their police. A lot of... I've now made a real study of it, but I believe Durham has more people with college degrees on the police force than pretty much anywhere else. And also, like I said, I'd like to speak on behalf of the improvements that especially Benita Green has worked so hard for and got me to help her, and also Fayette Street, Walter Jackson, who was my schoolmate, and that community is pretty much 100 years old. And my granddaughter has recently moved into that community. And also, as I said, I'm a very proud member of Durham, North Carolina. And Durham needs to be... People need to remember what Durham's like, you know, Fayette Street. Now, between Roxborough Street and Diller Street, right, it's a lot that used to happen in that block that a lot of people don't know anything about. And right now, you cannot see any trace of what that used to happen in that space. I also had a business, had bull sitting in the name of it. So I would like to tell you to fund the proposals that we have, because the cities that were called out were small cities, all except Riley. You know, and they don't work as hard as Durham people do. I know as far as firefighters, and as far as the police people go, I got two cousins that are policemen now, one whose father just retired.
Mr. Holloway?
I'm all in this committee.
I try to let you go over about 10 seconds, but once you start hitting the 10-second over mark, I have to kind of cut you a little bit. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Appreciate you. I'm looking at the card. The person lives at 622 Delaware Avenue, but you didn't put your name on it. And I'm going to ask you to, once you finish speaking, to come and pick it up and put your name on it. And if you would just state your name, thank you.
Sorry about that. I am not sure how I did that. My name is Nora Weston. I live at 1622 Delaware Avenue here in Durham. I am here representing the Durham hub of the Sunrise Movement. Sunrise Durham wholeheartedly supports the HART program. We thank the council for piloting this program and ask that you continue to expand it to create 24/7 access across Durham. We believe that healthcare, including mental health care, is a human right. This program has been working to close a major gap in access to care. It keeps our neighbors safe. It makes all of us more safe. It makes it possible to access emergency services for our neighbors in crisis without worrying that we are going to put them in further danger. All Durham deserve this safety. Every city deserves a safety. Please expand this program. Thank you.
Good evening, city councilors, Mayor O'Neill, city staff, and members of the public. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask the city council to fund the two new staff positions requested by the Solid Waste Management Department. I want to share some of what I've learned about the plastic crisis with you tonight. The plastic crisis is not merely a marine debris issue impacting ocean gyres somewhere far away in the Pacific. It's a crisis that starts in places like Cancer Alley in Louisiana with oil and gas extraction that pollutes our air and poisons nearby communities. It's a crisis that exposes all of us to thousands of harmful chemicals that increase the risk for incidence of and mortality from cancers and other chronic illnesses. Like all pollutants, it harms BIPOC communities more than whites, while also forcing them to be responsible for the waste that people who look like me create. In Durham, it's an environmental and climate justice issue as we truck our waste daily to Sampson County, where the poverty rate at 20.6% is well above the national average. In Durham, waste also ends up in our streets and waterways. It decreases the value of our homes, and it costs taxpayer dollars to clean up. Because of preemption laws and the political landscape in North Carolina, addressing plastic pollution will be tricky and require creativity. And creativity needs resources, and the adopted budget must reflect that reality. A public information and communication analyst would coordinate waste reduction, reuse, and recycling initiatives to address single-use items and waste. And this position has been requested for years and denied. Now is the time to grant it. The science has been clear for a long time. The status quo to address waste is not working, and we can't recycle our way out of this alone. But we have a path for reversing the harm caused by plastic. It starts with these two positions. And though I'm here to talk about my favorite topic, which is trash, I also want to voice my support for the expansion of the HART program. I stand in solidarity with my comrades who have built a coalition, recognizing that community safety keeps all of us safe. Thank you.
All right. And your name was Ms. Mason, right? Is that correct?
I'm Rachel Karasik.
Okay.
27707.
Tony Mason. Tony Mason. Okay. Thank you so much. I will now address just the people in the audience remaining. If there's anyone else who's here in person that would like to speak on this item, and then we will turn to our persons on the internet. Anyone else in the audience? All right, sir. And once you speak, if you will fill out a card as well. If you would please state your name.
My name is Gordon Mathewson. I live at 612 Price Avenue. And I'm speaking in reference to Hayti Reborn, Fayette Street area, that Mr. Holloway mentioned about historically, Fayette Street area, a lifetime that only the people who've lived here would know about it. And some of you may be aware of it. And the preservation of that area, the preservation of what was created by Black entrepreneurs, neighborhoods, people who attended the public schools in the area. Fayette Street was probably the most active Black street with Black people, as well as Pettigrew Street. It's kind of difficult for you to see the vision of what took place, to actually see the economics of staying in your own community and also working with your own people for whatever you needed, because that was what was provided. And to know that there were so many artisans, the brick masons, the carpenters, people whose skills now that are rather rare because you don't get those skills anymore. At training in high schools, you have to go to a community college. But these things made a big difference in the community and what people had, and the safety of it all, that you could walk the streets at night or at any time. And some of you may not ever get to know that, to have that, that you could walk the street at night, and you knew you were going home. Everybody knew you were going home, and nothing was going to happen to you. And we didn't even have as much lights as they have on the streets now. Might be a light on the corner, then you got to go so many more blocks before you see another street light. But this is something that's still a part of Durham, and it's the making of Durham. So we would appreciate any efforts towards monies that would help to restore it, because it is a legacy. And once it's gone, we'll never get it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Fill out a card.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem Mark Middleton, and the distinguished city council members. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to make remarks, even though we did not sign up. I really greatly appreciate it. I am Dietrich McMillan, managing attorney of Legal Aid of North Carolina. You formally heard from my esteemed colleague, Attorney Sarah Delmato, concerning extra funding and maintaining funding for the eviction diversion program. And I am in awe of the teammates of Legal Aid of North Carolina and the excellent work that they do. And I really just came here to support them. But I want to let the city council know that home is where the heart is. And when you are being evicted because you asked for a habitable home, or you're being evicted because you have lost your job, or even through the pandemic crisis, these esteemed women and men of Legal Aid continued to work tirelessly and effortlessly. I want the city council to understand that we do not take this request lightly. When I hear of one of my teammates having to go to court on a Friday and have 18 cases to try, and has successfully been able to continue or win 16 of those cases, I think it would be impressed that we should have more funding to help people maintain the homes in which their heart is. And I just want to first also thank you for the funding that you have already given to us, for it is very, very much appreciated. And we hope that you will continue to fund us as well as give us extra funding so that we can continue to help people preserve their hearts. Thank you.
Thank you. We now turn to our speakers on the internet, and we will start with Ms. Gwen Silver. Is Ms. Silver there? Check with the clerk. She's not there. We now turn to Tricia Smar, S-M-A-R. Tricia. Ms. Smar, if you can hear me, you would have two minutes to speak.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
And we can hear you. Yes, ma'am. You will have two minutes. Thank you. And if you just state your name, just to make sure.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tricia Smar, and I'm both a City of Durham resident. And tonight, I'm here as the Injury Prevention Coordinator with the Trauma Center at Duke University Hospital. My role is to provide education, outreach, and collaboration with community groups and agencies to prevent the injuries that we're seeing in the Trauma Center. Motor vehicle crashes are one of the most common causes of injury that we see patients for, and those, along with bicycle pedestrian crashes, encompass hundreds of preventable deaths and serious injuries every year in Durham. In this proposed budget, the City of Durham is making a financial commitment to keep all roadway users safe. By including funding for a full-time Vision Zero coordinator, I will now have a point person within Durham Transportation with whom to collaborate on roadway safety programs. We can work together to understand the scope of this preventable issue of roadway death and injury and advocate for better policies and projects within our city. This staff person has been the missing piece in Durham's Vision Zero commitment for several years, and I'm thrilled as a partner agency to see this position in the budget. Additionally, the $34 million proposed investments in sidewalks, bike facilities, and traffic calming, especially in divested neighborhoods like Brag Town and Merrick Moore, speaks volumes to Durham's commitment to saving lives on our streets. These types of investments and better options for walking, biking, and public transit are so necessary to keep our children and all of our residents safe. We still have a long way to go beyond this budget cycle to create a complete network of sidewalks and protected bikeable streets citywide. But I'm encouraged by this proposed budget and encourage council members to vote to support these and future Safe Street investments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Smar. We now turn our attention to Mr. Stephen Neal, and he'll be followed by Mr. DeWarren Langley. Mr. Neal, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Councilperson Middleton and the rest of the council people. I support the budget for expanding sidewalks in the urban tier. I also support expansion of multimodal, meaning bike lanes and public transportation together in the urban tier. And I realize that busing is a county function, but it seems like it's something that needs to be connected to everything that we do with all types of multimodal transportation. Benita and Vanessa spoke very clearly about the needs of their neighborhood and the fact that we need sidewalks in order to get bus shelters. So it seems like a better coordination between the city and the county. And that area is very much warranted. Being in suburban southeast Durham with the Leesville Road Coalition, we don't really need what they need, as we've been developed to be car-centric and continue to be with almost 10,000 new single-family and townhomes mostly too far to walk from commercial services. So please spend the money on the urban tier, especially prioritizing sidewalks, because it is the gateway to public transportation, and compensate our firefighters and police well enough to protect our expanding community in the manner that Durham's current and incoming services citizens deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Mr. Langley? And as he's coming on, if there are others on the internet who would like to speak on this item number 36, if you would raise your virtual hand so we can recognize you after Mr. Langley. Mr. Langley, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, I can. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Mark Anthony Middleton, members of the city council, as well as City Manager Page, City Attorney Ray Bird, as well as City Clerk Schreiber. Thank you all for this opportunity to speak. I'm speaking tonight requesting an investment of $250,000 to strengthen the capacity and programming of the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation. We are a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing intensive skill and career-focused program services and mentorship to boys and young men of color. Our goal is to facilitate their academic success and prepare them for the competitive workforce. The Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation takes pride in our commitment to ensuring the academic success goes beyond theoretical knowledge. We have designed our program with a practical focus, equipping boys and young men of color with the tangible skills that are directly applicable in the competitive workforce. By aligning our curriculum with real-world demands and industry trends, we prepare them to meet the evolving needs of the job market, ultimately securing their economic stability and mobility. With an investment of $250,000, we could significantly enhance our capacity to deliver impactful programming and expand our reach within the Durham community. Specifically, these funds allocated will be used in order to enhance our capacity, because currently we operate with six volunteers. In addition to expanding the number of young boys and young men that we serve through the Young Men of Excellence, as well as the Career Pathway Program. By supporting the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation, you will be invested in the academic success, leadership development, and economic empowerment of boys and young men of color in our community. Together, we can create a more inclusive and equitable society and change that data point that our police chief mentioned, where she most notably said, between the ages of 16 and 25, specifically here in Durham. specifically here in Durham, you're, as a black boy or young man, you are likely to be a victim or perpetrator of gun violence.
Thank you, Mr. Langley.
Thank you.
I'll turn my attention to our clerk to see if there were any hands raised for folks who wanted to speak on this item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Jaclyn Wagstaff would like three minutes, or two minutes, sorry.
Ms. Wagstaff, if you can hear me, you have two minutes. If you would state your name.
Can you hear me?
Yep, you're on.
All right, my name is Chaplin Wagstaff. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. Just like to speak on this item in support of most of the items on that the budget is reflective of now. But I do have a concern, and my concern is not to say I'm speaking against the budget appropriations for the Hart team. But what I want to say is that the same way that you're taking a pilot program and that's been in existence for only about a year and you're ready to fully fund it to make it a 24-hour-a-day program, I would like for you to take that same, put that same effort into funding our first responders who have been in this for over 100 years. We've had first responders from the fire department to the police department to whomever that's the first responder, and they need to be funded. It makes no sense that city council members are now making just about as much as the first responders and that vote only took you about 30 days to get through. And these firefighters and these first responders are still waiting for their, their improvement in their finances. And I think that this council has the ability to do that now. And I think they should do that with the same best that they did when they gave theirself the raise last year, just recently. So I'm in support of the firefighters and I'm in support of the Hart team. But I want to see the same effort put into making sure that our first responders are getting the same attention that you're giving to the Hart team, which our first responders have a proven history. And right now, I'm still debating on the Hart team. I want to see what it is they do, I want to see how it's done. I want accountability, I want to see how many interactions they have with these cases. I would like to see all that information. So just letting you know that full support of our first responders. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have recognized all who are in the, on the internet and all who are here. And let the record reflect that no one else has requested to speak on this item. I now declare the public hearing to be closed and the matter is back before the council for any comments that you all may have at this time. All right, we will continue our budget discussions on Thursday morning, I believe, at 9:00 a.m. You are free to join us at that time. Please also remember that we will pass a budget before the deadline is mandated by state statute, which is in July, but we would hope to have our budget ready for passage at our final city council meeting before the break on June 20th. So keep those dates in mind. And we now turn to item number 37, which is the consolidated annexation 418 Clayton Road. This is, this public hearing is a zoning case and we will now receive the report from Ms. Roper, our staff.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor O'Neal, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and honorable council members. Before I begin, staff would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law. And affidavits of all notices are on file in the Planning Department. A request for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation and initial zoning map change has been received from Uriah Dorch for one parcel of land totaling 0.69 acres and located at 418 Clayton Road. The annexation petition is for contiguous expansion of the primary corporate limits. The intent of the annexation is to build two single-family homes. The properties are currently designated low-density residential on the future land use map. The existing residential suburban 10 zoning is consistent with the future land use map designation of low-density residential. As part of this annexation petition, the applicant is not seeking a change in the underlying zoning district. A direct translational zoning is one in which the existing county zoning is translated to the identical city zoning district upon the annexation of the property into city limits. A translational zoning does not include a development plan and any future development may proceed according to what the zoning would allow. While the property is currently vacant, future development under the existing zoning of residential suburban 10 allows for agricultural activities, single-family residential development, community services and daycares. Commercial and industrial development is prohibited in the residential suburban 10 zoning district. As a reminder, three motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into utility extension agreement. The second is to approve the zoning ordinance. And the third is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you, staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Roper. You have heard the report from staff and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff or members of the council? Seeing none, check with our clerk to make sure we have no speakers signed up for this item as, at all, either on the internet or here in person. All right, I will now declare the public hearing to be closed and this matter is now before council. As you know, we have three motions for our consideration this evening of this matter. The first being motion number one, to adopt an ordinance annexing 418 Clayton Road into the City of Durham effective June 30th, 2023 and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Property Resolution Services LLC.
Move this red.
Second? Been moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. Madam clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
The motion passes six to one with Councilmember Holsey Hyman voting no.
The second motion for our consideration is to adopt an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance by taking property out of the residential suburban-10 RS-10 Fall/Jordan District BF/J-B County jurisdiction and establishing the same as residential suburban-10 RS-10 Fall/Jordan District BF-J-B city jurisdiction. I made it through, didn't I?
Move this red.
Then moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. Madam clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and please report out.
The motion passes unanimously, seven to zero.
The third motion for our consideration is to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute 160D-605.
Move to adopt consistency.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. Madam clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out, please.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We now turn to item 38, which is a consolidated annexation L parcel. This item is a, this public hearing is a zoning case and we will turn to Ms. Roper to receive our staff report.
Good evening, Brooke Roper with the Planning Department. A request for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation and initial zoning map change has been received from Ping Chen for two parcels of land totaling 117.7 acres and located at 2755 U.S. Highway 70 and 4903 Leesville Road. This annexation petition is for contiguous expansion of the primary corporate limits. The intent of the annexation is to develop a maximum of 400 single-family and townhouse units with a minimum of 200 of the units, units being townhouse units. The previous annexation request, case number BDG2025, was denied by City Council on August 15th, 2022 by a vote of three to three. The applicant submitted a new annexation petition after the city council vote. Additional commitments were made at the time of resumittal, which seek to address Planning Commission comments and concerns regarding density, erosion and sedimentation control and affordable housing. The current zoning is residential rural and industrial. For the initial city zoning of this site, if annexation is approved, the applicant proposes to change this designation to planned development residential 3.950 to allow for the construction, again, of up to 400 single-family and townhouse units. This request, formerly named Griffin Residential Tract, received a recommendation of denial from the Planning Commission on May 10th, 2022 by a vote of 14 to zero. The properties are currently designated low-density residential and recreation and open space on the future land use map. The proposed planned development residential 3.950 zoning is consistent with the designated use shown on the flum. If the proposed zoning is approved, there will be no change to the future land use map designation. While the current use of the property is undeveloped, future development under the existing zoning of residential rural and industrial allows for agricultural activities, single-family residential development on lots of one acre or greater, conservation subdivisions and industrial uses. Commercial development is prohibited in the residential rural and industrial zoning districts. As a reminder, three motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is to approve the zoning ordinance. And the third is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you, staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Roper. You have heard the report from staff and I am going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff from members of the council? All right, we will now turn to our speakers. I believe Mr. Steve George is here as a proponent and I believe he may also be the developer. And also, we have as a proponent, Mr. Anthony Catalino online as well. So, Mr. George, if you would come, sir. We have about five speakers who are signed up as opponents. So we'll start you off with, what do you think you need, 10 minutes?
10, how about 12 minutes, just in case. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Steve George, I am with the CSC Group and we are the owners of the property and will be the developers if this project is approved. I just wanted to hit some highlights of the report and what we've proposed for this project. We firmly believe this is a great area for residential and will serve the Durham community very well if approved. We did change from the first meeting, the stormwater control. What we've proffered is we've adopted all the new techniques that have been approved in the new ordinances, which include the use of flocculants, the double-row silt fencing everywhere on the site and 150% increase in the retention areas. So what that is, is making all those retention areas 150% larger than they used to be, used to be required. This actually results in the, in that our post-development runoff off this site will never exceed 80% of what's current. So it actually is improving the runoff of the site and not making it any worse. Not even making it the same, it's making it better. Also, through very careful design of this site, we've minimized the crossing of the floodplains and floodway areas to only the construction areas of the Northern Durham Parkway, the required public utility crossings and the greenway easement in that area. We have kept crossings to a minimum everywhere on this site. We're making numerous traffic improvements to the area, which includes the extension of the Northern Durham Parkway all the way across the project, along with a key collector road that is part of the Durham transportation plan in this area. RTIA indicates that these improvements will provide a long-term help solving the congestion in the area, especially as the Northern Durham Parkway becomes more and more important. We have proffered 12 affordable townhome units to be set aside for affordable in the community. And we have, I think we mentioned last time, we have talked with Habitat and Humanity and the Durham Community Land Trust to get ideas of how the best way to do this. So we're partnering, we'll partner with one of those, those groups or another one as we move through this. As the report shows, the community is revenue positive. And also, I should point out, we will, this community would contribute over $2.3 million in fees to pay for the Searls, the Southeast Regional Lift Station and the Brightleaf Outfall, which runs to this site. By the way, this outfall was built for the exact purpose and use that we are proposing for this area. We have dedication of greenway easements, which will provide greenway connectivity in the area and further out as this area projects more development. We have seven active open space areas on the site, each of them averaging over a half acre. We think this is very important and should be very unique and very useful for all the residents in this area. We do meet or exceed all requirements of the UDO, including open space and tree save areas. The open space and tree save areas we are projecting are in excess of the required by the ordinance. As was mentioned, this property is zoned industrial right now and we have been approached by several industrial-type users, storage users, warehouse users that are looking at this site. We don't think this is the best use of the site, I think staff agrees with that. It should be, should go residential. We believe this is the highest and best use and it is continuing the flow of residential that is from Brightleaf K Parcel down to Leesville Road. The use and density is consistent with the future land use map, which has this area transforming to suburban-style development as contemplated when the Searls was built and the Brightleaf sewer outfall was extended to this area. Again, it seems like this was the outlook for this area from day one when Searls was put in. And we think this will be a great project for the Durham area. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And we have some representatives from our engineering and transportation team also.
Thank you so much, Mr. George. And you have about seven minutes left for rebuttal, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
We have one, two, three, four. Now, did your colleague, Mr. Cotton Talano, did he want to speak?
No, that's fine, he will not be here.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we now turn to Ms. Pamela Williams, Ms. Donna Stanback, Ms. Robin Barefoot and last name, I believe it's Ross. You will each have three minutes or a person.
Okay. My name's Donna Stanback. I live at 4825 Jimmy Rogers Road in Durham, North Carolina. Lifelong resident. What you see on the slide is a topography of the L parcel. And pointed out are the two tributaries to Lick Creek that are running very close to where they join Lick Creek. And L parcel is situated between these tributaries and has an elevation that varies because of the creeks. And you can see the color from 419 feet to 324. This steeper terrain will require massive grading, deforestation and blasting based on historical data. Northwest Tributary is designated as the eastern wildlife corridor. The two ponds will be drained. Let me see. Okay. The matrix for this particular project The matrix for this particular project was mostly minimums, except for the forestry, but that was because there is a lot of wetland and the middle Lick Creek bottom land runs through there and a lot of steep slopes that, you know, with the tributaries have to have a lot of trees. The mass grading right now, we would request that this be at a 20-acre maximum because over 80 acres would have to be used at one time if we follow with just one phase. And this is aligning with the nearby municipalities. And the blasting is probable due to the elevation changes, and we would ask that the developer-owner will be responsible for the damages to people's property. This has not been occurring. It's an ongoing issue. And, you know, there has to be a stop in place, and that should be with the developer-owner. And this also includes well checks after the blasting. Now, one area that was done a little bit better was the stormwater plan. That, again, was there. The open space was at minimum. The impervious soil was at minimum at 70%. The repair buffers were minimal, and the borders and buffers were minimal. This entire area is, this is an example of the mass grading and deforestation. The basins are next to the perennial stream, and this would happen with this particular project.
Ms. Stanback.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Three minutes left. Thank you so much. Turn to Ms. Williams.
Good evening all. My name is Pam Williams. I'm a lifelong resident of Durham County. I live within a half mile of this area and everything. And as Donna was saying, there are basins, the proposed basins on this mass grading is right next to the creek. That's what's proposed on the next one also. Well, we're assumed it's going to be right next to the creek. And although the amended ordinance will be a helpful start, but will not go far enough to address the serious sedimentation issues that we have been documenting in southeast Durham, Lick Creek watershed, per the Sound Rivers. Okay? Again, our request, we're requesting developer to minimize the mass grading to 20 to 25 acres per phase as surrounding municipalities, to provide the East Durham Wildlife Corridor on the southwest side with a 300 non-graded buffer. It's the blue area up there, and right now, they're showing that they're building about 150 feet inside that 300-foot buffer that you would have for the wildlife corridor. We're requesting blasting responsibility for all damages from the developer and a minimum of $500 for each of the 220 additional students. I believe they're only proposing around $21,000. Consequences, with the violations continuing with minor fines and not enough staff to monitor on a regular basis, should the explosive development continue to allow mass grading over 20 acres, deforestation up to property line, sediment-filling streams, environmental deconstruction of creeks and wildlife habitat, creation of heat islands, blasting damage to homes and wells, gentrification, inspectors, firefighters, police, EMS personnel, and infrastructure stretched beyond capacity. And I believe y'all heard that multiple times tonight. A cumulative impact study, determination of secondary consequences to human and natural environment, should be completed prior to approving any other subdivisions. And as you see, there is a Legally-Morda Act pending right now. This is the area. I'd like for you to look at the picture up in the upper right-hand corner. This development has been developed over 10 years ago. Can you see any trees in it? The only place there's any mature trees is where the creeks were. There's 142 acres in this development. This is what I would call a heat island. All this that you see on this map in orange and yellow, it's going to be looking just like this if we continue to design to minimum standards. And I want to say that I support all the police and fire department. They have been a help to me when I was taking care of my elderly parents, and I thank them so much. And y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, let me see.
Sorry, we turn to Ms. Barefoot and Ross, on the last name, Ross.
Okay. Sorry.
Mayor O'Neill, council members, my name's Robin Barefoot, and I came tonight prepared to read to you from the North Carolina State Constitution, which tells you that the policy of the state and you all as political subdivisions are supposed to control and limit the pollution of air and water, and in every other appropriate way preserve as part of the common heritage of this state its forests, wetlands, estuaries, beaches, and open lands. I was going to remind you that there's a lawsuit coming from the Southern Environmental Law Center regarding the pollution of Lick Creek. I'm a plaintiff in a lawsuit in northern Durham against the county regarding a conservation subdivision, which we believe is wrongly interpreted and applied by the city and the county. There are owners who are suing developers for failed construction, for blasting, for water loss. I was going to remind you that, as my colleagues, my friends showed, those conservation subdivisions and this property development, the annexations, are being clear-cut from top to bottom and from left to right. There is nothing being conserved. And I sent those photographs to you, Mayor O'Neill, and also to Brenda Howerton, and also to Wendy Jacobs, because I know she's been a very loud proponent of, I won't say that word. She has been a favorable proponent of conservation subdivisions, as was I when I first saw the one that was supposed to be at the end of Preston Andrews Road, Wet Rock. It was a completely different model than Mason Farms, which is proposed out there now. I was going to tell you all that stuff, but then I came tonight, and I was so impressed with the citizenry that showed up tonight. I was on fire seeing the citizenry here. And what I want to tell you, instead of all that stuff that I was going to tell you, is that in this room tonight, you had the organizations, the coalitions, the individuals, and the land trusts who can do the work with you to address the firefighters' needs, the police' needs, the sanitation needs, and the affordable housing. Developers that are represented in this room, who do the kind of devastating development that we're seeing all across, and I got those photographs off y'all's map that Durham County holds, that those developments are what are causing our affordable housing shortage. They are building garbage homes for $500,000 for sale, and they are not building affordable housing for the people who were in this room today telling us that they made $40,000 a year because they were protecting our lives. And so, I oppose this subdivision, and I want you all to stop approving these developments so that we can take a breath, we can do the work with the citizenry of this community so that we can get this done right. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you also for your work.
Ms. Ross, and if you would, once you're done, if you would put your first name, we actually have to keep these cards as a part.
I will. I'm sorry, I was on some kind of weird bump over there.
Okay. I'll put it right here.
Write my name down. Okay, so my name is Katie Ross, 8135 Lowell Valley Drive, Bahama, North Carolina, which is in Durham County, but not Durham city limits. So, what I'd like to talk with you about tonight is reasons that I think that you should put a pause, at least for a few months, on approval of new developments. I think pause is maybe more appropriate than moratorium, because moratorium seems to last longer, but at least a pause. And the reason I think you should put a pause on is I believe you need more expert opinions, more information as the foundation of your decisions. Because I'm, you know, mostly the pretty boring life, one of my hobbies is listening to you guys' videos after the fact. I often cannot be here, but I look back and see what's going on. And one of the things I've been looking at this week is the deep dive series into affordable housing. I must have looked at about six of them, not, I don't listen to every second, but I kind of scan through them and see what each speaker is basically talking about. What I didn't see in there was any environmental experts on that. I saw a lot of developers, a lot of people from the real estate community. I saw some people with homeless people, but no one there with expertise in hydrology that's being impacted by all of this blasting, or even just the mass grading. I saw no experts coming and talking to you about the deforestation and the damage that that is doing to our environment with specific attention to these kinds of great developments. I did find a couple of interesting comments, though, which make me believe you all should revisit your fundamental understanding of why you are, some of you, are pushing all of this development, and that's this fiction of this huge influx of workers that is going to, you hope, will come to Durham. I think that that information is maybe two, three years old, maybe pre-pandemic. Things are changing, and I think that your approach to development needs to change. Just quickly, Dustin Ingleton from the real estate rental community, he testified in the deep dive that there's an 8% vacancy rate in rentals in Durham right now. That is very high. He said three is ideal, two is too low, which would cause higher rents, four is a little high. 8%, you should be seeing these rents coming down. You might want to ask why or not. Instead of addressing that, he put his hand out and was asking for more. Maybe you should pay more of the rent. Maybe the taxpayers should pay more of the rent. Maybe you should remove all.
Ma'am, you're.
All regulations to allow them to.
Your time is.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I believe those are all the speakers in opposition at this time, and we will turn back to Mr. George for the remainder of your time for rebuttal, sir.
Thank you. I don't know where to start here, actually. Let me address, probably not going to be in order here, but let me try to address the best I can. Blasting, we will do pre-surveys, post-surveys. We will really do all, meet all requirements of the blasting codes that are in place. We've done that for years, but there will be pre-surveys and post-surveys to take care of any damage that would possibly occur. I would ask if staff could address, does our plan meet or exceed all the requirements of the UDO? Can someone address that?
Hi, Brooke Roper, planning. I can confirm that the plan either meets or exceeds the UDO requirements.
And the UDO requirements were put into place to be common sense and, common sense for development and to meet the needs that Durham has put in place, right?
That's correct.
This is some just general comments, because I don't know how to address some of this stuff, but there was a comment about no experts are being utilized in this process. Durham's planning staff has reviewed this plan for a year and a half to two years, probably 10 different reviews at least, okay? And believe me, they are more expert in this than anybody about any other towns I've ever seen. Hydrology, the rock, the blast, everything like that, they look at all of this, okay? That's what we go through this review for. So, to say there's no experts involved in this, I think is a fallacy. Timmins Engineering, who's doing this work, they're very, very professional, so I take a little bit of offense to the no-expert rule or comment. I'd ask the staff also, has CSC Development, CSC Group ever been cited for any damaging, destroying development?
Brooke Roper, planning, not to my knowledge.
I've also addressed the fiction of new workers comment. So, never mind, I won't even address it. Okay, is there anything I've missed? Any other questions?
Not of the council. I don't see anyone asking any further questions of the council. Did you have?
Madam Mayor, I have questions, but I was waiting for the public.
Once you're done with your rebuttal, they then may have questions. Are you, are you done with your rebuttal?
Yes, I am, yes.
All right, we'll turn to Councilman Williams, and we'll turn to Councilwoman Capiara in that order, without me interrupting.
This is, my first question is for staff. Excuse me. Properties that have industrialized usages, usages next to them, are they usually valued as far as land value? Are they usually lower than properties that are more commercialized or residential? Is that something you can answer right now, or no?
That's a hard question for me to answer. I don't know. I'll let Sarah Young.
And if we, for context, if we're surveying across our city, and we're looking at, I guess, land value, I guess, based on pricing, is it fair to say that residential neighborhoods that are attached or adjacent to industrialized zones are lower value than other, like, more residential areas?
Good evening, Sarah Young with the Planning Department. If I'm understanding your question, you're asking generally, are residential developments near or adjacent to industrial, do they have, tend to have lower property values? Is that?
So, if I'm looking at Merrick Moore with the cement or junkyard next to it versus Brightleaf at the park.
So, I can tell you, and we are not experts in property appraisal, but what we can tell you anecdotally is that it does appear that properties adjacent to industrial have, do have, tend to have lower property values.
Thank you. To the applicant, as it's zoned right now, you stated that you've had folks that have approached you all for these industrial-type usages?
Yes, and light industrial, but there's been a lot of interest for storage-type and warehousing-type facilities. That seems to be something that a lot of businesses are looking for in this area of Durham.
Gotcha. I, I know when it gets to Hauvy, I could be a bit loose-lipped. So, I just want to say thank you to our staff. I think that you all are great experts. I, too, take offense when it is looked at less than, but thank you all for what you went to college to get an education for and what the taxpayers pay you to do. But, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Just real quick, I had a question around the piece that one of the residents raised with a little bit more of buffer in that back corner around the wildlife corridor, and just curious if that's something y'all have thought about, or is that something that could be, could be proffered?
I would have to think about it, and I guess I would ask, we have Beth Blackman from Timmins here, that maybe she can, I didn't actually, maybe we need a little more information, too, unless, Beth, did you catch what that was? Unless, Beth, did you catch what that was? So we've stayed on that?
We've stayed on part of it, but not all of it.
Okay, so why are you... We've adhered to everything that was supposed to be.
Beth Blackman with Timmons Group. So yes, that came up in our last review with staff and they asked us to show it on the plans. And so it is shown on the existing condition sheet, but was not a requirement of staying out of it in its entirety.
Thank you, I understand that. I was just curious if you're willing to proffer a little bit more around that.
What is it? Could I have one minute?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Sir, just to curate. Oh, ma'am, thank you.
I'm sorry, we're trying to work on the wording. So if the specific area that we were discussing is the eastern Durham Wildlife Corridor and if that was added into the no build area for homes, for lots and roads, but stormwater control measures, greenway, shared access paths would still be allowed in that area? Does that...
I think that's a question for...
Sound reasonable as a wording? So it could still be used for site development, but lots and roads would not be in it?
Sarah Young with the Planning Department again. Yes, that can be made as a proffer. I just want to clarify that your proposed wording would be that lots and homes would not be in the expanded buffer? Or in the, I'm sorry, the wildlife corridor area?
Yes.
Okay, just want to be clear about that wording, that that would be the wording you're proposing.
That's what we were trying to figure out too. That's what you're doing.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And then what was the amount that y'all had proffered for D P S? I know it's in my packet, I just don't...
Actually, it's $33,000.
Okay, because I think it's less, maybe I just... Okay, it's $33,000.
It shows as 20, but it should have been 33. We did 33 last time we were here, yeah.
Perfect, thank you. I thought it was higher and that's why I was confused. I appreciate it. Those were the two questions I had. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Proten, Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for being with us tonight. Mr. George, I have a question about the tick tock, the evolution of the proffer subsequent to the council's decision not to move forward. Could you tell me, because they seemed considerably more muscular after the council vote. Talk to me about the rationale behind not doing this in the first place and what made you add these commitments?
Well, actually, the stormwater commitments, we had verbally agreed with staff. You know, that whole stormwater thing sort of...
You say verbally agreed with staff?
I think we mentioned it that night. I can't remember if we did or not. Neil might be able to help me. But I believe we mentioned it that night also, that we were going to do those. And if not, but that was sort of in flux. That whole week was a little, you know, we were looking at different items. And yeah, I thought that last meeting, we had mentioned that at the meeting. But subsequently after that, we cemented that with staff saying, yes, we will definitely do those things.
Subsequent, so subsequent, the formal commitment was subsequent?
Could be, yes, yeah.
I don't want to mischaracterize, is that a fair characterization?
I think so, yes.
All right. The... I want to add, the last speaker, our neighbor, the last speaker who spoke about the pause, would you mind, I want to ask you a question, if you don't mind? Thank you. If you don't mind, so everybody at home can hear you. So I want to, I take very seriously the comments from our residents and the neighbors, I do.
Thank you.
And I resist out the box labeling groups or people, no matter how much it comes back towards us. So I don't call all developers bad and I don't call all people, residents who come here, nimbyist, who don't want development. I take that seriously. So I try and listen to each point and, you know, try and resonate with the things that people say. When, so this is a question, when you call for a pause...
Yes.
What threshold would we have to cross in order for us to unpause?
The threshold of feeling totally comfortable with your knowledge. If I, and I, three minutes cut me off a little, it's totally fair, everybody got that. But I would have gone on to say, A, I did appreciate Sarah Young's presentation when she showed the polluted water and things like that. I did see that and I appreciated it. I believe the things that you need to be comfortable with and to really learn about is what I was saying. There is, the population, it doesn't look, from everything I've read, that it's going to grow the way you thought it was. I mean, you generally as a council, not each individual. But a couple of years ago or three years ago, the tech industry, and I come from Seattle. I moved here in 2020 from Seattle. Seattle bent over so far for tech, for Amazon, for Google, and now their downtown is decimated. I worked downtown, I was a public defender for 15 years. So, and my friends are still there because it's still just a few years since I left. The downtown is decimated. They, high tech, they laid off tens of thousands of people. Now, they're not even coming into the office. Only a small percentage are required to come back and work in town. So they don't need to live right downtown where they were. And I believe, if you could, my idea is not to believe me, because I'm not an expert in this, but to have a session where you would have somebody from these wonderful universities we have here who are experts, somebody from the business school. What's happening with this tech industry? Are these people really going to be coming? We're building everything for them, but what's going to happen if we don't, if they don't come and we have these many thousands of homes that have been thrown up and are just sitting there and have destroyed the environment where they're sitting?
So if I...
That can be in that, so that's one thing. Just how many people are really coming? Somebody, you know, that would be something to have a session on.
Sure.
And the environmental things, I didn't, the hydrologist, I don't believe there is an environmental hydrologist working at the Planning Department right now. That's not a comment on them, but they are here at the universities. Why not have one come in and explain what the blasting does to the water tables, to the neighboring wells that are being destroyed? You know, 10 at a time apparently in one area. Why not have that? It wouldn't take that long. You could have a day of testimony and then you would know. Take the pause and then you would be better informed to examine these site plans and the presentations of the developers with really pointed questions to protect yourselves and the people.
I think I've gleaned a discern, the thrust of your answer. So a pause until we get more knowledge. And if I might say respectfully, because none of this is personal, respectfully, we're the government. We have some of the best experts in any field at our disposal at any given time. Universities are on speed dial with us. And so I respect, you know, differences and I really do, differences of opinion and what data points we want to latch on to and what experts we favor as opposed to others. My second question was, I remember one of, several of your colleagues saying, pause at least until we adopt the amendments.
That would be a good point, too.
Here's the challenge for me. We have developer who has actually incorporated, almost to a fine point, what's in the amendments. And I've heard someone say tonight, they don't go far enough, though. The very amendments that were commended to us to pause until those were formally adopted, we have developers voluntarily. And again, because I resist calling people nimby, but understand the intellectual challenge when we're told, wait until those amendments are adopted. Then when we have de facto adoption, even before formal adoption by developers, then we're told that they don't go far enough, which is challenging in terms of finding where the goalpost is. I'll be honest with you, I was not really excited about the first iteration, which is why I asked about the kind of tick tock after the vote. But it's gotten, I mean, as I look, they've addressed what are, and I read the plan, I read all the Planning Commission comments, what they, you know, planners brought up. The very amendments that have been commended to us, they have adopted voluntarily. What more, what would make this, what would make you vote yes if you had my job?
Well, one thing would be what we've heard tonight from the police, fire, mental health commitments. The reason I'm saying this is because I think you need to have infrastructure in place before you put the homes out there. I'm not an expert on this area of the county, okay? So I'm not saying I'm an expert in this geographical area. But listening tonight, it was so impressive to me that when we talk about infrastructure, it's way more than a pump station. The infrastructure is the people, for the fire department, for the police department. And I know, I have watched some of these tapes and I've been here at times when the police chief or the fire chief has come in and said, oh, sure, we can handle that. But the boots on the ground, they're the ones that are really handling it. And they're telling you tonight that they will do their best to handle it. And I believe that, they're all heroes to me. But if they don't have enough people, if they can't fully staff their stations, if they don't have, they can't recruit because they don't have high enough pay grades, all of that means, that's infrastructure, human infrastructure that's not there for even the current residents, let alone an influx of residents. So that would be something that I think you'd have to be sure, or if I was voting, I'd have to be sure that infrastructure, that human infrastructure was going to be there before I started building for a whole bunch more people to come in. It's already overbuilt. I mean, the other, I'll just quickly say this because I was up here and it was in my notes. The other person that spoke, that I, that made an impression on me in the deep dives was the guy from Data Works, who I'd never heard of before. But what he was saying was this population growth that hasn't been counting the people that are leaving. So instead of whatever's been predicted, a 30% increase or something, it's really only 2% per year when you net it against the people that are, people die, people move out. So there's a coming and going, like an ebb and flow. And so that guy, you know, he had a very interesting point to make. And that's why I was saying, not that I know the answer, but that it would be good for our elected officials to find that out. What's really happening? How many people can we really expect to come in here now? Like I said, tech companies are going down, they're downsizing.
Thank you, thank you. I remember that presentation. Well, he used tax records, which was a bit strange for population.
Well, he's a statistician, not me, so it is.
No, I appreciate you engaging with me. Thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Thank you, no, thank you for calling me back.
I appreciate you, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, you're back.
It was, I believe, Councilwoman Freeman first and then back to you, Council.
Just a couple of questions for staff and for the applicant as well. But just, I know that one of the residents shared that there were an additional 220 students that would be added with this project. I didn't see that though, and I was trying to get a verification on it.
Yes, let me just quickly check, thank you. Apologies, I was looking at the old staff report that we have. Thank you, Sarah. So there, I'm looking at too many screens now. So yeah, there is going to be, in the staff report, it says, an estimated school demand increased by 137 elementary school students, 44 middle school students and 49 high school students.
So 220 sounds about right?
Yes.
And previously, we've been accepting proffers at about 500 per student?
That is hard to say and I don't have the data in front of me right now, but that's something we can look into.
So that would be about 110,000, not 33,000?
So I believe that the applicant has proffered tonight $33,000 for Durham Public Schools.
Thank you. And just, just for the sake of the conversation, I think it's improper for staff to advise council that an industrial site would lower your property value. I just want to make that clear. I don't think that's a good idea to start down that direction. I think that's what appraisers are for. And it's already a problem that we assume that a sale price will be the sale price when it goes to market. I just want to make that clear. And then for the applicant, I am just trying to understand how you figured your numbers for the 33,000 and then also for the 12 units. Just acknowledging, you increased from 380 to 400, which is an additional 20. So I'm assuming those 12 units kind of come in there, so you're adding eight units. And so just help me understand where you got to 33,000 and then also how you got to 12 units.
The 33,000, it was my understanding, 33,000 was done at the 500 times the delta in the students that were going to be added. If that's incorrect, we will agree to pay 500 for the delta of the students from, that are being added to the site.
And that's 220 students?
If that's what it is. Does that, I mean, does that work?
Yes, you can make that proffer and we'll just calculate what that would come out to be.
Yeah, because you know what I mean, there's a difference of where you start from, I think.
Zero.
Maybe not.
We started zero. There's nothing on the land, we start at zero.
That's, yeah, so it's 500 times whatever that number is, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay?
I don't think you're understanding that the number is zero to 220.
I apologize, is there a question for staff?
Can you specify how many students would be added?
Yes, so after calculating it, it would be 230 students.
230 students at 500 each student. That's what I was just trying to make sure you understood that.
No, I understand, if that's the number, we'll do the 500 per student, yes.
And then on affordable housing, the 12 units?
Yeah, so your question is, basically, that's 3% of the total. So we were using that 3% baseline as the number we were looking at.
And where'd you get the 3% from?
It's just, that seemed to be a number that we've kicked around and I've heard and different developers have used, so, yeah.
And just to say very clearly, I think that 15% would be more... And just to say very clearly, I think that 15% would be more respectful, but I understand that 12 is where you're at. 15% would be about 60 units. And so when we're talking about doing development in sensitive areas, the trade-off is really high. And so it's an insult to me when folks come in talking about minimum standards are common sense, because they're not, because there's still runoff with some of those minimum standards. And it's also an insult to say 12 units, 3% of 400 is a fair trade-off for this property. And so I do want to make that abundantly clear, as some of the comments made were really off-putting. I do know that proffering the animal preserve is helpful if that happens. And I'm not opposed to having storage units or warehouses, you know, on the site. So I don't feel like that's a pressure point to push towards having 400 additional units on this site so that you can capitalize and take the profits from all of it back home. I'm not familiar with any projects that you've done in the past, so I can't give you a pass or not on the blasting. But I do know that that has been a problem. And so pre and post is, like, it's incredibly important at this time, as it has been very well documented that many wells have been falling apart based on some of the development that's been occurring in these areas. I do know that, as was mentioned a number of times tonight, that we are, it's not that we're at capacity, it's that we're losing our officers and our fire folks. And so it does create a different calculation in what the cost benefit is for the city of Durham to continue to grow at this speed. And so for that, I do want to note that I'm not in support of moving this forward at this time. It doesn't mean it's not a good project. It doesn't mean that it wouldn't be a great site to build. But I do think that there is, there is a lot of credence to actually having more conversation about what it looks like to do a development that is, that is not going to cause greater harm and would also bring more affordable housing. That's, it seems simple to me. I'm, you know, I'm not the one trying to make the money. I'm sorry. But I do think that we could do better. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Staff, thanks for answering all of my questions. And, you know, there, what we, you know, as a government, what we can't do is wait until something happens and then respond. What I do know is there are contracts that are signed, and Apple is coming. And it's not 3,000 jobs. It's more between 10 and 14,000. Now, if they come, I mean, if they don't come, they don't come. But if they do, something's going to happen. And what's happening right now in the number three best place to live in the country, in the number one state for business in the country, is people are coming here. And that's a fact. I would invite you to come to more city council meetings, because I'm compelled about a lot of things, including tonight. But there's a lot more than what you see on the surface. And I do see a lot of people clapping in amen. But when you get in this position, where you have to spend 60 to 70 hours a week for $35,000, yes, getting paid very little, but this is your full commitment in addition to your full-time job. Trust me, you live this information all day, every day. So my colleagues vote their conscience whatever way they want. We receive the information the way that it compels us. And that's why I'll always be respectful for each person's concern. But I'm also very accessible, because the biggest thing that's plaguing our community, I don't mean that in a disrespectful way, is ignorance. I don't know everything, but I know for sure, a lot of my constituents don't know everything either. And we come in here and we say what we should do, and we say what we don't know. And we totally forget that we have an entire governmental staff that does this work eight to whenever they finish every single day. So as I said earlier, I do take offense when we dilute that or decrease it. But as a government, we, as elected officials, as a matter of fact, we can't govern based on imagination. We can't govern based on personal preference. We have to govern on the law. And if we have a problem with that, then we should change the law. We should evolve the law. But the law may not be good enough for us personally, but that doesn't mean that we're going to do it on something else. And that happens a lot in here. It happens a whole lot. So I respect, I respect every comment that is, that has been stated in here. I definitely respect the staff who are doing this work every single day. I'm going to respect my colleagues, myself, for living this every single day. But to act as if we are ignorant to this, it's not a good look. So I invite conversation. I invite engagement. We may be on different sides of the decision, but I'm sure that we can get at least to a basis of fact and understanding. Because even the firefighters, there's more to it than what you hear that was not mentioned, not once in here tonight. So thank you for everybody's comments, including my colleagues.
Mayor Protem, and this will be the last go-round.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to, I have a question for staff. First, I, Councilmember Freeman, I thought your, your work was brilliant on securing a more robust offer per student. I, I'm sorry you're not going to support this development after doing such great work to make it better. Staff, I, are we tracking documented cases of damage that has been causally linked by blasting? Because if, I want, there's already a legal burden for these developers to make folk whole. And I want to lean into that as a government. I want to go after developers that have caused damage to folks' property. So are we, are we, how robust is our, is our data point? Are we, are we tracking that? What's the current state of developers that are ruining people's property?
I do not believe that the planning department is tracking that, but I see Sarah Young is stepping forward to speak.
Yeah, that is not information that the planning department tracks. That is information that we could seek to obtain from the Fire Marshal's office. I also do not know for a fact how and if they track that, because typically, damage as a result of blasting is a private civil matter between the property owner and the blasting company that is insured, and they are the ones that are liable for any damage. So I would have, we would have to do a little more homework.
Before you cross the threshold, though, of taking legal action, I mean, I've heard any number of developers say, proactively say that we will assume responsibility for damage, you know, that's caused by blasting. We don't, we don't track that either. So we need to talk to, I need to talk to the Fire Marshal. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anybody else? All right. And I do not believe that we have anyone else on the internet either. So at this time, I will declare the public hearing to be closed, and the matter is back before the council. With any further comments?
Just a quick question, ma'am.
Yes.
Did we capture, have, staff, have we captured?
The proffers.
The proffers?
Yes. So we have two proffers tonight. Essentially, the first one is lots and structures will not be constructed in the Eastern Durham Wildlife Corridor. The second is the contribution to Durham Public Schools in the, in an amount of 500 per student, which would amount to a total of 115,000 contribution.
Thank you.
Just a logistical question. Is your clicker working at this time, Councilwoman Holson? Okay. And we'll return back to that. All right. All right. We have three motions for our consideration at this time. And the first motion is to adopt an ordinance annexing L parcel into the city of Durham effective June 30th, 2023, and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with the CSC Group LLC.
Moved as red.
The move by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilwoman Williams. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote.
The motion passes four to three with Mayor O'Neill and Councilmembers Halsey Hyman and Councilmember Freeman voting no.
We now turn to motion number two, and that's to adopt an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance by taking property out of the residential rural RR Industrial I Fall slash Jordan Lake Watershed Protection District dash B F slash J dash B, and establishing the same as planned development residential 3.950, PDR 3.950, Fall slash Jordan Lake Watershed Protection District dash B F slash J dash B.
Moved as red.
Second.
The move by Council, Mayor Protem Middleton, and seconded by Councilwoman Williams. Madam Clerk, if you would open the vote.
If you will close the vote and report out. And the motion passes four to three with Mayor O'Neill and Councilmembers Halsey Hyman and Freeman voting no.
And the last motion for this item is to adopt the consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute 160 D J 605.
Move to adopt consistency.
Second.
The move by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilwoman Williams. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote.
If you will close the vote and report out. The motion passes seven zero.
All right. Thank you so much. We will need to return briefly to item 37. Our clerk indicated that Councilwoman Halsey Hyman's clicker was having some difficulties. And so on the motion number one, I think it came up on the screen that there was actually a no vote, but you want to change that vote to a yes vote.
It's not staying, so.
All right. So we'll go back to, that will be number, the first motion, where it came up on the screen that it was a no vote, is now changed to a yes vote because of a technical malfunction. We now turn to item number 39, consolidated zoning map change, the streets at South Point Mall, number two. And this is a public hearing, a zoning public hearing case, a public hearing as a zoning case. And we will receive the report from Ms. Roper.
So Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem Middleton, and Honorable Councilmembers Brooke Roper with the Planning Department. Laura Holloman of the John R. McAdams Company Incorporated proposes to change the zoning designation of seven parcels of land totaling 132.57 acres and located generally at the South Point Mall area at the intersection of Renaissance Parkway and Fayetteville Road. The current zoning is commercial center with a development plan and residential rural. The current development plan applicable to the site is case P 98-39. The applicant proposes to change this designation to commercial center with a development plan to allow up to 1,945,000 square feet of non-residential floor area and up to 1,382,000 square feet of residential floor area. This includes 1.2 to 1.445 million square feet maximum of commercial uses, including existing floor area, up to 300,000 square feet of office uses, up to 200,000 square feet of hotel with up to 200 rooms, and up to 1,382 apartments. Utility extension agreement has also been received with this zoning map change request. Their properties are currently designated commercial on the future land use map. The proposed commercial center with the development plan zoning is consistent with the designated future land use. This request received recommendation of denial from the Planning Commission on March 14th, 2023 by a vote of 10 to 3. As a reminder, three motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is to approve the zoning ordinance, and the third is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Roper. You have heard the report from staff, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff from members of the council? Seeing none, we will call forth our developer. We have actually two proponents and two opponents. Mr. Biker, that means you all have Eagle Time, six minutes apiece. Sir, Mr. Andre Banks, is he going to speak? I think he's listed as a proponent, but he's on the internet.
All right. Mayor, Mayor Protem, so the public hearing's open, Mayor?
Yes.
We're here respectfully to ask a continuance of the public hearing now that it's open. We spoke with the planning director. We respectfully ask for this to be continued to June 20th, Tuesday, June 20th. I did speak with two affordable housing developers today about assisting us with this agenda item. Unfortunately, due to family and travel conflicts, they could not attend this evening. We think they can attend on June 20th, and therefore, we respectfully ask for this public hearing to be continued until Tuesday, the 20th. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Biker. I'm going to look to the planning staff to see if we can make that accommodation, as I know that's going to be the final item. So if we can, then it will be up to council to just vote it, and we can do it by hand raise.
Yes, we've spoken with Mr. Biker previously, and we can accommodate the June 20th meeting.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Are there any objections to a motion to continue from any member of the council to June 20th? Everybody's okay with that? All right, June 20th is.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
We will see you. And Ms. Adams, we have your card here. So if you'd like to come back also. Mr. Severa, that will be the last council meeting before the break. So if you all could make yourselves available. And they say there's only one item, so it won't be a long meeting, a long, one public hearing. I'm sorry, one public hearing. We now turn to item 40, which is a public hearing and economic development incentive agreement with Eagle Landing Partners LLC. And this is a non-zoning hearing, and we will receive the staff report from Mr. Dickey.
Mayor O'Neill and members of council, my name is Chris Dickey with the Office of Economic Workforce Development. For you is an item to consider approval of a proposed agreement between the city of Durham and Eagles Landing LLC. Eagles Landing Partners LLC proposes to fully restore and adaptive reuse the 8,500 square foot property at 1406 Fayetteville Street, better known as a Scarborough House, into a boutique hotel. It will have eight guest rooms, 10 bathrooms, a commercial kitchen, and a formal dining area that seats 25 people. The hotel will also feature a 5,000 square foot conference room event space. Eagles Landing Partners is requesting 500,000 of incentive funding from the city of Durham to cover capital expenses to improve the property. The blighted property is listed in the National Register of Historic District, which is in need of extensive renovations to restore it to its historic state. This area along Fayetteville Street has blights of depression and is reflective of drug use and depressed living conditions in some cases. It's located less than a mile from downtown Durham Lincoln Community Center and North Carolina Central University. Traveling this route down Fayetteville Street, traveling this route down Fayetteville Street, the property excludes a dark mood due to the criminal activity and instability. Due to extensive work that is required to get the property to a habitable state, restation would be undefeated without financial assistance from the city of Durham. The project when completed will be the area's only boutique hotel on Fayetteville Street, which will assist in further business development, providing job opportunities for local residents, hospitality training opportunities for NCCU students, in addition to being used by the community for public and community-related activities. A major priority of the city of Durham is increasing and strengthening economic stability of the city. The project will, the project when completed will be a key step in implementing the neighborhood assessment plan that was approved by city council. This calls for renovation of blighted and underutilized commercial buildings as a means of attracting private capital investments to promote business development in this city of Durham Target Commercial Corridor. The project will serve as a catalyst project, continue to attract business development opportunities to this area. The proposed project will produce 1.6 to, $1.6 million in private investments, with the city contributing a half a million dollars. Staff endorses this project, which will be an asset in this project, which will be an asset in promoting the continued revitalization and vitality of Fayetteville Street Commercial Corridor and surrounding neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Dickey. You have heard the report from staff. I will now declare this public hearing to be open and will first entertain questions and comments from the council. Hearing none. Is there anyone else that feels the need to speak tonight? All right. Let the record reflect that no one else has requested to speak on this item. I now declare this public hearing to be closed and this matter is back before the council. We have now had the public hearing and we are ready to entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an economic develop incentive agreement with Eagle Landing Partners LLC in an amount now to exceed $500,000 for building renovation project Scarborough House 1406 Fayetteville Street, Durham, North Carolina.
So moved?
Second. It has been moved by Councilwoman Johnson and seconded by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Freeman. Let's open this vote. Madam Clerk, now watch this one.
How we do it?
Can you report out for me?
The motion's unanimous, seven zero.
That's the way to do it. Yay. Go Fayetteville Street. Go my typing teacher. That's my teacher out there. Doing a great job. Okay. Now we have one more item that we got to vote on. We have a pooled item, people. We had one pooled item, remember, before y'all start moving. That was a pooled, one pooled item. And that was item number 20, 22. Yeah. So we need to vote. He signed up for the wrong thing. So, so we need to vote on item number two, which was a part of the consent agenda 22, which is, let me get that, what it was. Item 22. Also, don't forget. I think it was a police report. It was a, yeah, it was a crime report, I believe. I want to say it was a police. The first quarter crime, 2023 first quarter crime report. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. Yes, I'm sorry. Can somebody?
So moved.
So moved.
Can you?
We're seconded.
Second.
So moved by, okay, everybody's sleeping now. So moved by Councilwoman Johnson, seconded by Councilwoman Williams. Okay. Can you open the vote for us?
Madam, Madam Mayor, there's a speaker in the queue with their hand raised.
Can you open the vote, though?
Sure, I'll open the vote.
No. Oh, that.
Is the same person?
Yes. Mr. Cox, we are about to vote. Did you want to be heard, sir? Mr. Cox, I see your hand is raised. Mr. Drew Cox?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate the time that you offered to me earlier today to speak on these matters with the police department. I just had a few Bible verses that I'd like to share and some anecdotes, if that would please the council.
Madam Mayor, do we let folks speak twice?
I'm sorry, but sir, we, we are, these, this is from a presentation from the 2023 first quarter crime report. Is there some comments that you want to make about that report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you have two minutes.
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I would like to thank and commend our police chief, Patrice Andrews, whom you've entrusted with the department, the police department. And I, I'd like to commend her efforts to support her officers and manage her department as she sees fit. And a few months ago, there were a series of memos that were sent to the city manager's office in regards to managing her pay scale for officers to try to rectify some of the issues the department has been experiencing. And those, all of those measures were denied. I'll close with a few passages of scripture. Where they're not your religious, I hope you'll find beauty and truth in them. Habakkuk 1, verse 4. "The law has become paralyzed and there is no justice in the courts. The wicked far outnumber the righteous, so that justice has become perverted." Amos 515. "Hate evil and love what is good. Turn your courts into true halls of justice. Perhaps even yet the Lord God will have mercy on the remnant of his people." With that time, I'd like to thank the council. And I look forward to partnering with you to determine how the police department is going to move forward through this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Madam Clerk, we have motioned and we have seconded. And we are now ready to vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
The motion's unanimous.
Thank you. It is now 11:34 on May 5th, 2023. What is it? June 5th?
Madam Mayor? Sorry. Close. I still need to bring the other item. I'm sorry. I still need to do the other item. The resolution.
Seen it on Thursday, though.
But, yes. I'm sorry. I just need to make sure that we're all in accord.
The resolution, thumbs up, thumbs down? All right, all thumbs up?
Thank you for that.
All right, everybody.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. I will not be at the session in the morning on Thursday.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Kids are graduating.
Okay. Hopefully it'll be a short session. Okay. All right. All right, y'all. We did good. 11:35, June 5th. We are now adjourned for City Strong, June 5th, 2023. Pass your thingies down, your clicker.